Is now in session. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember File.
Present.
Councilmember O'Kane. You're muted, but I saw you say present. Councilmember Shrebnik.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herbert.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here. All right. Is that everybody?
Yes.
Great. All right. Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. If you will, please join me. And Rob has got the flag on his screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is your opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. Please state your name, city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. And there will be a timer on the screen to help remind you. Clerk, please call the first person.
Patrick O'Brien. Patrick? Mr. O'Brien. I think we'll move on.
Yes, please.
I'm going to call the remaining citizens in the following order: Stacy, David Morton, John Peoples, and that would be all. Stacy?
Then we'll go back to Patrick.
Stacy?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I'm ready to start. Okay, I wanted to first bring up that, thank the city council members that attended the Asphalt Walk for Clean Air this Sunday. It was a great event. We had a great turnout. And hopefully, we'll do it a couple more times, and it'll really make a difference. I also hope that you invite Mr. Morton to any talks on the 26th. I think he has a knowledge that is really needed to be there. So because he does understand all the processes. The other thing I wanted to talk about is that I did drive Simon's Road, and it is very dangerous how short the notice of the lane ending right before 92nd Street. And if traffic is going with, you know, the way it's going to be going once we're out of this pandemic, it's too short of a notice. I think there needs to be longer notice, especially because these people are intending to fly by and cut off lane. I did see today that they were looking to put up speed limit signs, and that's good. But if we could do more signs prior, that would be great. And also maybe have some cops up there at first to catch the speeders. The other thing is that I wanted to talk about, hopefully, we'll do that before anybody gets hurt. And also veterans, I'm hoping that we can have a proclamation for in November at the first meeting of the month or prior to state about the veterans that have served for Kenmore and also the ones that are living here at this time or their family members and celebrate Veterans Day, have the staff flag at half-staff, and then the raising. There can easily be sticks noting where every six feet is out on the lawn to where some families can come out that want to. And it could be Zoom recorded for anybody else. But I think it's about time, since Kenmore wants to be a bigger city and have more events down near Main Street, that we do something to show the veterans how much we cherish everything that they've done to keep our country safe. Thank you, and that's all I'm done.
Thank you. David Morton?
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm David Morton. I live near Redmond. Those in the asphalt industry have certainly heard the phrases liquefied asphalt and liquid asphalt cement. The phrases sound similar, but they refer to very different things. The authority on producing asphalt pavement is the EPA document AP-42, which explains how to estimate air pollution from industrial activities. AP-42 contains two sections describing the processes for producing asphalt pavement. Chapter 4.5 describes asphalt paving operations in general. Most asphalt pavement projects use either a hot-mix asphalt HMA pavement or warm-mix asphalt WMA pavement. Asphalt pavement is a mixture of gravel, sand, and an asphalt binder. The HMA process is described in chapter 11.1 of AP-42. For HMA, the binder is called asphalt cement, which is the thick residue from the refining of crude oil. Asphalt cement, which is semi-solid, is made liquid by heating it to around 300 to 350 degrees Fahrenheit. This is called liquid asphalt cement, which again is asphalt cement made liquid by heating it. No solvents were used. The WMA process is described in chapter 4.5 of AP-42. For WMA, the binder is called liquefied asphalt, such as cut-back asphalt, which is asphalt cement dissolved or cut back with volatile petroleum distillates such as jet fuel. To summarize, the HMA process uses liquid asphalt cement, which is asphalt cement made liquid by heating. Only minor amounts of VOCs are emitted from liquid asphalt cement. The WMA process uses liquefied asphalt, aka cut-back asphalt, which is asphalt cement made liquid by dissolving it in a solvent like jet fuel. Extremely large amounts of VOCs are emitted from cut-back asphalt. PSCAA has permitted CADMAN to make HMA, not WMA. CADMAN's plant operator says that CADMAN does not use performance-graded asphalt cement very often, but they do use a lot of medium-cure cut-back asphalt to produce WMA. By mixing cut-back asphalt and gravel in a drum mixer designed for making HMA, large amounts of jet fuel are evaporated and sent up into the air breathed by the people of Kenmore. CADMAN should not be using cut-back asphalt to make asphalt pavement at a facility designed to produce HMA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. John Peoples?
Yes. John Peoples, Kenmore. Good evening, city council. Two items tonight. First is last week's injustice imposed by the Supreme, State Supreme Court regarding 2019's Victorious Citizen Initiative I-976 for $30 car tabs. The court's decision is infuriating, since this same court failed to find as unconstitutional another recent initiative, 1639, on restrictions of our Second Amendment rights. Even though it contained multiple topics, this court gives initiatives that meet with its ideological approval a free pass and finds a way to block and strike down those initiatives that don't. This vile judicial activism is an insult to our republic. Likewise, the very person who assigns the ballot title was opposed to the measure. So it's infuriating that the court found that the title was confusing, arrogantly eviscerating the will of the people, as if the people were easily influenced by the title. I submit to my neighbors that anyone who agrees with last week's decision on I-976 should accept that 1639 is also unconstitutional. Just as in a banana republic, the people in power get to have it both ways. This is unbecoming the American republic. I welcome the council members in joining me in abject frustration and indignation of this decision. Next is last week's anger over the suspension of radio host Dory Monson. A true American values others' right to speak unpopular facts. I welcome all those who wished and pushed Monson off the air to come on back to America and leave their tyrannical and totalitarian ideologies at the border. For the record, there are two sexes, male and female. Our parents did not merely conveniently assign us a sex at birth against our will. They did us the profoundly loving and basic favor of properly identifying our sex so that we could be raised accordingly. Those among God's children who are not completely readily identifiable at birth have, on their behalf, the love and care of their parents and the very best medical care in the world. Women cannot magically become men. Men cannot become women. Boys cannot become girls and vice versa, simply because they feel like it. The act of pumping up children with hormones and surgically altering their young bodies at great medical and physical risk to their futures from a previously obvious biological reality is inhumane, heartless, and monstrous child abuse. It isn't scientific and biological facts that have changed recently. It's the way some advocates and activists think about those existing scientific facts. The only social construct here is the false notion that sex and gender fall on a spectrum. My full participation in Kenmore's civic life will not depend on my adhering to what I know to be is a rather fanciful ideology. I refuse to be bullied into silence. There is nothing fearful about stating unpopular facts in public. And I'd like to second the motion of Veterans Day proclamation. Great idea. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Patrick O'Brien?
Good evening. Pat O'Brien, 6330 Northeast 181st Street, Kenmore, Washington. Good evening, council. Thank you for all those people that attended our demonstration on Sunday. We walked from the Starbucks down to the Kenmore Asphalt Plant. I have needed to get back or needed to hear back from Nigel Herbert, who at one coffee with the council wasn't aware of noise and hours of operation code in Kenmore. I supplied him those codes, and I would like to hear from him on how the city hopes to implement those separately from Puget Sound and Clean Air, because those are clearly issues that the city can deal with. Then at the next meeting, there's supposed to be a meeting with Kenmore Asphalt Plant where Brian Hampson is going to go. I would encourage all city council people to go. Rob Carlinsey, Jerry Palet, and any other administrator to go to that meeting and have some serious words with the Kenmore Asphalt Plant. I'd love to see Mayor Baker do a proclamation saying the city of Kenmore knows that the Kenmore Asphalt Plant is operating in violation of having an operating permit that's legal. It doesn't. It's operating illegally, because they have lied on their applications. And I'd like everybody to sign the nuisance letter that I've put out, asking for people to, some feedback on how the asphalt plant affects them and their health. And that, I'd like to encourage that. I'd also like to say I wasn't able to get permitted into the last coffee with the council. Somebody didn't admit me. And I'd like to see city staff work more diligently on getting up early and enforcing the hours of operation and noise codes on the Kenmore Asphalt Plant. And once again, they have no legal operating permit. It is, it was, it's been violated. There's no way that that permit is a legal document. I agree with everything David Morton said. John Peoples, you're right on. Thank you, John. And I would just like to see some better leadership out of the Kenmore City Council when it comes to listening to the public's cry, when it comes to the public health. I feel like some people that may or may not show up at a rally might rethink their position and sign one of these citizens' complaints about the asphalt plant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Elizabeth Mooney?
Hi. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Elizabeth Mooney, resident of Kenmore. And I have a couple things to say about our environment. I would like and appreciate deeply for our citizens' public health and safety if our city council could write a proclamation. I have mentioned this recently to some of our council members, including our mayor, David Baker. And I'm suggesting, based upon what other citizens have said, that it would state that the city of Kenmore does not support the Kenmore Asphalt Plant operating during burn bans or hazardous smoke days. This past week has been very eventful. I support this, the other citizens discussing our concerns about asphalt emissions. And we marched in support of a Green Kenmore and Clean Air. Numbers of people have signed on to the North Lake Washington Clean Air and Clean Water Facebook group, and it continues to grow with 78 members. Public awareness of local environmental issues continues to grow. And yes, as Patrick O'Brien was saying, it's come to our attention, and thank you, Brian Hampson, for letting me know that the city of Kenmore is planning to enter into discussions with CADMAN regarding the asphalt plant emissions and testing at the stack. I cannot underscore the importance of finding out more about the emissions coming from the plant, specifically directing testing, which is coming out of the stack under normal operating conditions. Until that's accomplished, we can't move forward in ensuring that the citizens in Kenmore and Bothell and Breyer and other places are not at risk. The process needs to be transparent. It would be useful to have citizens present at such discussion, or at a minimum, that our elected representatives from the council be present. We will be sending a letter to council and staff regarding the October 26th meeting with CADMAN. And I can just mention a couple things here. In it, it says, "It's our understanding that staff will be meeting the 26th to discuss testing." "While we realize that this may be the first of many meetings, we feel that it is beneficial to all to include both city council members and concerned citizens. Certainly, there are members of this community who have earned a place at the table, given the years that they have been subjected to the emissions." While this meeting marks a great start to addressing the issue, it's just a start. And I would encourage the city to pursue multiple strategies. This, this letter is going to be signed by PERC, People for Environmentally Responsible Kenmore, Bothell Citizens, Carolyn and Jim Freeze, Tracy Bonazinski, Jim Myers. And thank you very much. Go healthy, Kenmore.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney. I see no further hands raised.
Yeah. Carl Michaelman, I think, has his hand raised or is trying to anyway.
Um, we can ask him. Stand by. Mr. Michaelman, did you want to speak during appearances? Carl Michaelman?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, now.
Now, I didn't know what's going on. So I like to talk, public comment, but I also would like to do the hearing. So if you guys can see me, great. I couldn't see you before. So I'm Carl Michaelman, 18023 62nd Avenue, Kenmore. I'm really starting to have a concern with what's going on with this council, especially now with all this COVID and so forth. You know, the saying is, "We're all in this together," and I am not seeing it. I am not seeing anything happening with council when it comes to all of us in this together, whether it's staff or not, meaning that you guys aren't furloughing, you aren't cutting. All you're doing is cutting tax, you're raising taxes to us. And what really concerns me with this council, I mean, I can count five people on this council. One on Section 8, that doesn't work. Another one that works for the Port of Seattle, which is, again, a government issue. Another one works for a legislator, again, for a government issue. Another one works for the King County, again, government issue. And then again, another issue of someone working for the Public Defender's Office, which none of you, okay, have the issue of paying these taxes, because you're used to be taking from the government. And what's becoming very frustrating for me, I don't see us all in this together. I just see tax, tax, tax. I see cutting of the, of the programs for the services. And quite frankly, I think that's wrong. The direction, this is not what the people of Kenmore want. And just because you've been voted in doesn't state that. And it is a big concern, because most of you are working for the government. And when it comes to taxation, the government just keeps taxing and taxing. That's how you guys get paid. So there's a conflict here, a very big conflict. And it really concerns me, because this is not the council, or this is not the way the citizens of Kenmore want. They want to be in this all together. And what that means is, is that council and staff start cutting some of their stuff that show you have some skin in the game. And it just doesn't seem that's happening. And I've kept my mouth shut for a long time. And what's happening is, I needed to get involved with this, because I'll be talking again about the tax that you're talking about, the property tax for the public hearing. But I got to tell you, folks, this is becoming frustrating. And for those who know me, okay, I'll do anything for Kenmore. But what's happening is, you guys are now coming on the other side of the left, and it's just not what we were looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further hands raised.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you for your comments. We definitely need to hear them. And we can't, we can't do our job if we don't have public input. So thank everybody who spoke tonight. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda stands passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Proposed tax levy necessary to meet authorized tax-supported estimated expenses for the year 2021. Ms. Gregory?
Oh, I was muted. I apologize. I'm trying to figure out which, which screen to press to show the presentation. So I apologize for my...
You all do that.
Blown us here. Okay. Do you see my screen, which says, "City of Kenmore, public hearing"?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Good. So tonight, this is a public hearing for the purpose of setting the 2021 property tax levy and the excess tax levies, and to present and review how those are computed, and to provide an illustration of how the tax levy is set for the walkways and waterways bonds as well. Just a reminder that after tonight's public hearing discussion of the levy, and we have some budget presentations tonight as well, and for the next several weeks, there will be another public hearing on the budget on November 9th. I'll also present to you with a review of proposed amendments to the current 2019-2020 budget. And because you know it's really important that we don't close the books on 2020 with any of the funds exceeding their appropriation. And if all proceeds as planned, the following week, November 16th, will be the final public hearing on the budget. And on November 23rd, you will be asked to adopt the tax levy, the budget amendment for the current biennium, and then the 2021-22 biennium budget. And the important deadline for setting the tax levy is that the King County Assessor needs to have the levy ordinances by the end of November. So as you know, every year, we walk through setting the tax levy and whether or not there will be an increase over and above the prior year levy, other than the effects of new construction on the tax rule. And we can increase the regular tax levy by the lower of the implicit price deflator, the IPD, or 1%, whichever is the lesser. And generally, the IPD is higher than 1%. So 1% is a limiting factor, but that is not the case this year. The IPD for determining this year's allowable increase is not 1%, but 0.60152%, which makes that the limiting factor. And that is the factor that we have used in calculating the levy for 2021. So to set that levy, first you start with the prior year levy for 2020, which was $5.3 million. You add on the increase that you wish to take for the current year, which in this case, the recommendation is to take the 0.60%, which would yield, in addition to the levy, of $31,920. The preliminary estimate of new construction that would go on the tax rolls this coming year from the King County Assessor is $45,000. That also can be added to the levy, which results in a 2021 levy of $5,383,410. Here is where I would like to walk you through how the calculation of the expected tax rate is computed. So we've set or computed what we expect the levy for 2021 to be, $5,383,410. And I'd like to just point out, that's about a 1.45% increase over last year's levy, with $31,920 coming from the 0.6% increase and $45,000 coming from new construction. The assessed valuation that the King County Assessor has provided for the new year is $5,293 million. And this is actually a slight decrease from 2020. Often, the last time we saw a decrease in assessed valuation was during the last Great Depression recession. So to calculate the tax rate that you would expect, you take the levy that you are proposing, the $5.3 million, divided by the new assessed valuation times 1,000, and that would yield a levy rate of $1.012 per $1,000 of assessed AV. Last year, the levy on the regular tax levy was pretty much 1.0003. So it's a bit of an increase. The next levy that we need to consider is the excess tax levy to pay the debt service on the walkways and waterways bonds. Those were issued in 2016, resulting in a debt of $9.2 million. At the end of this year, the outstanding debt will be $6,210,000. And principal and interest due on those bonds in 2021 will be $531,000. Our projections and our plans show us that we are likely to issue the second $10 million of approved and authorized bonds in the first half of 2021. And if we do that, we will have some debt service likely due in 2021, possibly just interest payments, however. And so we are estimating $250,000 for that interest payment. And I reviewed this with our financial advisors from Piper Jaffray, and they felt that that was a good estimate to go with. We can structure 2021 without having a principal payment and delaying that until 2022. So all we are concerned with tonight is what and delaying that until 2022. So all we are concerned with tonight is what do we need to raise in 2021 to pay debt service next year? So that would require us to ask for a levy of $781,000 for the walkways and waterways bonds. And that number divided by the assessed value of the city yields a rate of 0.147. And combined, then, our levy rate would be about 1.159. So looking at the effect on a $600,000 property in the city of Kenmore, if you had a $600,000 property in 2020, based on the tax rate at that time, you'd pay about $600 to the city for for your tax burden. And if the value of your home really didn't change between 2020 and 2021, at the little bit higher rate of 1.017, your tax obligation would be about $610, $10 more than than last year. Assuming that your home did increase in value, say 5% to $630,000, you would be taxed at the new rate of 1.017, which would be an obligation of about $641. So that would be $41 annually, or about a 6.8% increase in the tax. I wanted to illustrate on this chart how the city of Kenmore taxes play out in relationship to all of the taxes that a resident or a property owner would pay. There are actually 12 taxing districts that impact Kenmore taxpayers, the county, the state, the schools, the fire hospital, sound transit, et cetera. And the total tax rate for most taxpayers in the city last year was $11.05 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. And of course, we can only use 2020 for illustration because no one has set their 2021 property tax levies yet. So the tax bill on a $600,000 piece of property in the city would have been about $6,630 for all of these overlapping taxing districts. But you can see that the portion of the tax bill that goes to the city of Kenmore is only about 10% of that total tax bill. And I've noticed over the years that has gone down from about 13% to now 10% as our proportion gets a little bit smaller incrementally compared to the other taxing districts. This next chart is just for your interest to show how over time, when assessed valuation was increasing, the tax rate was declining. Then when we entered the last recession and assessed valuation dropped off, the tax rate rose a bit. And then coming out of the recession, the tax rate did drop off and is at its lowest level ever, even though with the drop in assessed valuation, at this point, we do see like a 2 2 cent or 2% gain in the rate. And then new construction, of course, plays a big part in in the levy and the levy revenues. This is 2021 out here. It's kind of the lowest amount of new construction we've had for a few years. 2020 was an actual exceptional year with the greatest amount of new construction we've had in many years. And with that, I'll conclude my portion of the public hearing. And just remind you that next week, we'll have more presentations on the proposed biennial budget from these departments, and that we do need to adopt the tax levy on or before November 30. And we are scheduled to approve this on November 23. So thank you for your attention and be happy to take any questions or allow you to open it for public comment. Hi.
Yeah, yes, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, just just to underscore a couple of points. So this increase will raise about 77,000, 78,000. And that's it, right? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, just the addition of new construction.
Right. And if we if we decided for whatever reason to forego the point, the 0.6%, and this may be a question I'm just not understanding, does that does that go then into our ability to have more bank capacity? Does that add to our bank capacity?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I am not seeing anybody. All right. So if there is no further questions, I will declare the public hearing open for the proposed tax levy necessary to meet authorized and tax-supported estimated expenses for the year 2021. Will a clerk please call the first person?
Stacy? Stacy?
I'm coming. It takes a minute to turn the mic on. Stacy Valenzuela, Kenmore. It's very upsetting that yet again, you're trying to tax the residents of Kenmore when you know how badly the reception of the 17% tax went up on property last time. How many seniors were affected that had to decide whether or not to keep warm and pay their PSC bill or pay their property tax? We also know that not all the mobile home parks are lucky enough to not pay the amount of the public property tax that goes up as well. And a lot of them are hurt by this drastically on the part that passes it on in large amounts. How many of the seniors from the senior center called Mr. Baker crying about that? How many of these extra avenues were set onto the water and walkways event that the public, all the public did not get to choose on, like the big boathouse with the $1.2 million charge that the Row Club from Deborah Seabrick was lent $250,000? If they pay that, people wouldn't have to be taxed. If the school district pays their portion, we wouldn't have to be taxed. Is that not correct? And you're taxing PSC, the cable, the water district in every different angle. When people are, we're in a pandemic. Most people have lost their jobs. We don't know, they're saying that some of the fixed income is going to be increased. But I'm sure the healthcare portion of that will be taking the little raise that they do get. And it's uncertain how the future will be with people receiving the fixed income as well. And we have a big population of seniors. This is drastic. And from all the other meetings on financial sustainability, you guys have not decreased the staff that was increased last year by a lot. And that's a lot of dollars there that could be trimmed. And there's a lot of other events that can be trimmed. And you don't have to go so big with everything else. So I really hope you reconsider that the residents do not deserve to be taxed away from Kenmore. We love Kenmore. We treasure Kenmore. And we do not want to see all these changes that you are implementing. And I hope that you can see that and that you vote to not increase taxes anymore to the people, especially in a pandemic when so many are out of work. Thank you.
Thank you. I see someone with their hand raised. They're only marked by a period. I'm going to promote them. But attendee, would you kindly state your name and city of residence for the record?
Okay, Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. Are you with me?
We are.
Thank you. I have a comment and two questions. I'm concerned about the council's direction to raise taxes in lieu of rigorously, rigorously cutting expenses. I was disappointed and surprised as I listened to the Finance Commission meetings that they seem to gravitate so quickly to tax increases rather than fully exploring cuts. At one point, Rob Carlinsey convinced them that it was not a good idea to cut staff because the staff worked so well together. Tell that to the teachers across our state, whose teams are frequently split up when they are routinely rift due to budget constraints. In the business agenda item, there's a quote at the bottom, and it says, "This tax increase will not have a significant impact on the tax that a homeowner pays." That's a pretty presumptuous values values judgment. And I would ask you to refrain from such judgments. My two questions are this. What could you cut to gain the $250,000 that you need to pay the interest? And number two, where is the list, where can citizens see a list of all the cuts that are being implemented by the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, okay, there we are. I see more hands raised. Patrick O'Brien.
Patrick O'Brien. Hello. Patrick O'Brien here. And I would just like to agree with the the last person making comments. And also the previous comments of Carl Michaelman, where, you know, we, I try to call in on Fridays to report asphalt fumes and everything else, and the offices are closed. And so that would indicate to me that the Kenmore City Hall is closed one-fifth of the time. Why not drop the salaries by a fifth since they're not there? I know they work from online and whatnot, but certainly the amount, you got to cut somewhere. So there is a good place to to think about cutting. And and generally speaking, I find unbelievable that for some reason, the Kenmore truck with the sweeper on it and the vacuum goes by every week several times. But other vital services, such such as trimming back places that are in the city's setback are not being maintained. And yet we got this truck that'll run down a perfectly clear street on a weekly basis. I'm going, why are they doing that? Whose brother-in-law is running that truck? Or what's the deal? Because it happens every week. It happened today. So if somebody can investigate where that money in public works is going and what equipment they're operating, I think that'd be a fine thing to ask and and get a log, they'll keep a log of the equipment and find out where it's operating, when, and who's operating it, and see if you could maybe switch some of those hours over to other types of of setback maintenance or other things that the city is responsible for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. John Peoples?
Yes, real quick, I really am impressed with all the comments that I've heard so far. I'd like to second anyone who suggested putting more effort into finding places where the city can cut items, you know, pair back maintenance, that sort of thing, increase the time in between. Also, whereas my involvement has been primarily with addressing you all during your meetings and coffee with council, I've not had a chance to really dig deep for things on the budget. But then again, on the city site, it's not readily obvious where to go to find information on the budget. Whoever mentioned listing the suggestions for cuts has a very good idea. And I'd like to second that. And it sure would be great to see a link prominently placed on the city's main page that says suggested cuts or budget, so that citizens can more quickly get there and prepare to provide comments. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. I see no further hands raised at this time.
Carl Michaelman, I know had his hand raised.
Okay. Mr. Michaelman? Mr. Michaelman, you're muted.
Okay, try it again.
We can hear you.
Okay, can you see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so this is new to me on this. So you'll have to excuse me on this platform. Okay, so I want to talk about the proposal that you were talking with taxes. I got to tell you, I understand the fiscal issues that are going on with the city. It's not just Kenmore. It is is all all these communities that are happening. So that part I understand. But in your finance graph, you took an average home of $600,000, you know, to say how much it's going to be. And I Googled what an average home in Kenmore is right now. And the price is, let's see, Redfin was $730,000. And then Zillow was $760,000. So if you're going to propose and show show graphs and how much a house, an average house would be, you got to be on the numbers. And I got to tell you, Boff did the same thing. They took an average home of 400,000. And you know, and I know, that is not true when they were talking about their policing and their their rebuilding the fire stations. So I think you got to be upfront and be more realistic of what real numbers are because it doesn't sound that much at 600,000. But when you get up to 730,000 and 760,000, you know, that that those dollars start coming. Okay? And with the woman that was talking about the seniors, I so understand what's going on. And I think the thing is, since COVID, I go back to saying, we need to put our skin in the game. The staff needs to put their skin in the game. They need to show that they're cutting and not cutting us. I gave examples before with Rob. I was saying, take your health insurance, raise your deductibles to a normal $5,000 deductible. Take your insurance for the families. Instead of paying 90%, go ahead and pay 30, pay 70%. That way, we're all in this together. I have a relative at Mass General Hospital, and she's an executive. And she just got her pay cut 35% because of this COVID stuff. That's the key here. The key is, is that staff, as well as council, needs to put skin in the game. Taxing us is not the answer. And what's happening is if there was a way, okay, that we could freeze this for next year until this is over. I mean, it's getting ridiculous. You got the governor got a raise, a few other people got raises in the government because of the way that the unions are. I mean, enough's enough. And it's not that I don't understand we need to put more money and revenue and everything. But the point is, I need to see some skin in the game with the city of Kenmore instead of them cutting program after program after program for what's happening. We know it's not going to get better yet. And like I said, what is very concerning to me, and I'll say it again, that we have council people that work for the government. And what happens is, is they are not used to managing the right dollars. And what happens is, is they are not used to managing the right dollars for private business. So when we say that, it's okay for them to tax. They, they can approve that. They can go, because it doesn't bother them because what happens is, they work for the government as it is right now. It's wrong. And with that being said, I think the thing is, we really need to look at what the direction is of where we're going with Kenmore. Because this is not the direction that the, the people want at all. And I think what's gonna have to happen now is that the council has to look in the mirror and see what they can do for hard choices. You know, you raise taxes, how many, how many council people is that gonna hurt if they don't own a home? No one. If you're in an apartment or whatever the case may be, Section 8, we're taking money. The point being is, you gotta go ahead and think about what's happening and what would happen out of your pocket. And so with that, I just hope that you understand that I'm still in it with Kenmore. Okay? I, I'd just like to see a little bit more understanding with taxes this year. So I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Michaelman. I see no further hands raised.
All right, anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard on the proposed tax levy necessary to meet authorized tax-supported estimated expenses for the year 2021? Anybody else wishing to be heard? I declare the public hearing closed. Next item on the agenda. Well, that's interesting. You went to full screen and my screen just went totally black. So bear with me here. Ms. Gregory, you're up on the budget. And I want to remind everybody that as we go through each section, we're going to ask questions. We're gonna try our best to get questions asked that we need to get asked because we don't wanna continually go backwards and revisit things. So, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm preparing to share my screen again, but before I do, just to reiterate what Mayor Baker said, this will be our first meeting to start to look at the, the details of the budget. And what we'll do tonight is, I'll give you an overview of the revenues that we've included in the general fund and a kind of an explanation or breakdown of the primary revenue sources, and then an overview of the expenditures as well and how they've changed over the biennium. And then we will move into the department budgets in a somewhat sequential manner, starting with the city council budget, which I believe Rob Carlinsey will present. And then I will share my screen throughout the whole sequence. And as we go from one cost center to another, the person responsible for that budget then will begin to participate. So here we go. I hope that you will see. The first, always jumps ahead on me, the first slide, which says, this is the city of Kenmore's proposed preliminary 2021-2022 biennial budget presentation. So beginning with an overview of general fund revenue. Starting at the beginning, when we adopted the budget two years ago, we adopted a budget of $25.9 million, but you can see that from looking at the budget that we have amended it over the course of the two years to be 26,477,000. In the mid-biennium period of October, November 2019, we increased our revenue projections and our revenue budget by $550,000. We were doing really great at that time, not, of course, seeing a pandemic coming down the road, but our retail sales taxes had really increased. So we made a budget amendment, and that was the only amendment to the revenue budget that we made during the mid-biennium. We prepared projections for the current biennium, and within our projections for this year, we are noting that property tax receipts were better than originally budgeted by $133,000. Sales tax revenue continues to be better than budget by $569,000. And what we're seeing is that internet sales have taken over, supplanted, depressed sales in other retail areas. The city of Kenmore's tax base is inelastic, not elastic, and doesn't fluctuate wildly with changes, changes in the economies. We still, people still have to shop at their rest, there's their drugstores, their grocery stores, and these years don't fluctuate so much with the economy. But with the internet sales tax changes over the last couple of years, online retailers have really contributed and caught up with us. We also included in this projection the CARE-CRF grant funds because we are spending these allocated funds for human services, business assistance, technology, working-from-home improvements. So we've included that in the revenue projection just as kind of an offset to the expenses that we're incurring because we should be able to be reimbursed for all of those expenses. And also, we had some unexpected revenue that wasn't in the budget from Frontier and other code enforcement settlements. So in the 2021-2022 proposed budget, we are estimating revenue to be basically $27 million. And the property tax assumptions include the 0.6% levy increase in 2021 and a 1% increase in 2022, plus new construction that gets added to the tax rolls. We're estimating that sales taxes drop about 2.3% overall from the 19 and 20 biennium period because 19 was such a great year, but 20 fell somewhat due to the pandemic. So we don't expect any increase in that area. We are bringing in some additional revenue from the King County Park Levy, which will be used to offset costs of maintenance on park projects coming online. And then everything else, as you will see going forward, is pretty flat and in some, a few cases, declining from current or prior levels. So looking specifically at property taxes, we just went through the computation of the recommended levy for 2021 to be 5.383, which includes the 0.6% increase and new construction. And then in 2022, we assumed a 1% increase over that, plus again, the same level of new construction. Sales taxes for 2021, $2.6 million, which are basically flat compared to looking at our 2020 experience over the last 12 months. So we budgeted the same and provided for a 1% increase in the second year of the biennium. Utility taxes, electric and gas, we've assumed a 3% increase in growth, both from population and rate increases and usage in the next biennium, but with telephone and cell phone, we don't anticipate any increase at all. In the latter half of 2022, we have added in a recommendation from the Financial Sustainability Task Force of a 6% cable utility tax, and we've included it only for the latter half of 2022, which would raise about $190,000. Franchise fees, which come from, currently from Comcast and Zipley, cable are the same as the current year on average. Water and sewer, we are projecting a 1% increase. Development revenues are projected to, to decline over the next biennium. And when we come to the development services budget, Brian Hampson, I think, can speak more specifically about his projections for those permits, land use inspection type revenues. Liquor excise taxes, our distributions from the state, and we don't expect those to change very much. We use per capita projections provided by MRSC. And even though we saw a bump earlier this year in our liquor tax distributions, it's sort of leveled off. They're not continuing to grow like they were at the beginning of the pandemic. And even though they are higher than what we budgeted currently. And then the liquor board profits are expected to remain the, the same. Reimbursements include overhead cost reimbursements from capital project staff, not only from transportation projects and the engineers that work on those, but also on our park projects and surface water projects. We expect to recover direct costs of salary and benefits for those projects. And also included in reimbursements is $75,000 from the North Shore School District for maintenance on Morelands Park per agreement. We will see that there is no reimbursement requested or expected from North Shore School District for the School Resource Officer Program as that program is not expected to continue. Other taxes, we expect pool tabs and game gambling revenue to be flat from our 2020 projections. A new tax that was, it's not a new tax, but it's a new resource to the city for affordable housing sales tax. It was actually a piece of the state tax that could be redirected toward affordable housing coming to the city of Kenmore, materialized in 2020, and it generates about $22,500 a year. So that's what's been budgeted for 2021 and 2022. Some other miscellaneous items, again, I mentioned $200,000 transferred from the King County Park Levy for park maintenance. Our criminal justice distributions from the state are expected to be flat or increase very, very slightly. And then Kenmore Village lease revenue, these are draws against the lease revenue received for the Kenmore Village properties, $141,000. Switching now to general fund expenditures, we started out, well, I guess I should point out what, where we're at now with our 2019-2020 amended budget of $27.8 million. Our original adopted budget was $25,927. And during the mid-biennium, at the same time we increased revenue by half a million dollars, we increased our expenditures by 2.5 million. With the desire to transfer a million dollars to the street fund for additional road preservation efforts, we transferred $624,000 to the Strategic Opportunities Fund. We allocated $810,000 for public workshop startup cost, which was a carryover from the prior year because most of those funds were not spent in 2018. So we moved them and carried them forward to 2019 and 20. And then there was an additional 140,000 for consulting and new vehicle and development services. Then in April of this year, we once again amended our general fund expenditure budget due to the pandemic. All departments reviewed their budgets with a lot of scrutiny and developed budget reductions of over $669,000 across all departments. So those were an additional adjustment to the budget resulting in the 27.8 million. And that's what, that's the number that we are using for our projections to, to the end of the year because the departments did go to a great effort to try to project exactly what they would need to get them through to December. We haven't spent all of our COVID allocations, so this number may be understated. We have not, we've spent about third to maybe a little bit more of that and hope to spend more of that before the deadline at the end of November, funding our human services and our business partners and our community. And at the end of the year, we are going to be using one and a half million dollars as an enter fund loan to the West Sammish Bridge Fund because with that big project going full steam, the lag in grant reimbursements is putting it in a cash negative position. So the council will be asked to provide for a short-term loan to that fund to cover their, their cash flow needs. And then that's expected to be repaid in the new year. So moving forward to 2021, 2022, our proposed expenditure budget is $27 million. It's 2.8% lower than the current amended budget and projections. Pandemic reductions that are maintained in the new budget are about $660,000, and these are discussed in the city manager's budget letter. And as I just mentioned, that the West Sammish Bridge project will repay the general fund for the $1.5 million loan. You may remember that late last year and early this year, we went through a very intensive priority-based budgeting exercise, looking at our 2019-2020 budget and the programs that are offered in that budget. And I wanted to come full circle with you and show you the results of that process and how those programs stacked up in the four quartiles, with quartile one being programs that have, you know, have essential or critical roles in achieving the results for the community as compared to quartile four programs, which have minimal or no influence on achieving results. And again, these are presented on page 75 of the proposed budget. So you can see that quartile one and quartile two are about 26 million of the budget, which tells us that's where we're spending the bulk of our money on these programs that have a strong or essential influence on the results. And just for what it's worth, I happen to have the prior biennium handy, so I just wanted to show you the improvement currently compared to 2017, 2018, when our quartile one and quartile two projects were only about 20 million. So a great effort in refocusing our resources on high-quality, high-influential programs. So with that, I'm going to now transition to the departments, but this might be a good time to take questions if there are any. I have, I, hearing no questions, I'll continue to, to move forward. And Rob is available now to discuss the first cost center of the general fund budget, that being the city council budget.
All right. Thank you, Joanne. Good job so far. Really good information. Thank you so much. And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. Good to see you. I don't know if you guys noticed, but for a little while there, there were three city manager Rob Carlinseys. And I was gonna ask, may the real city manager please stand up? But looks like that got changed, so I don't have to compete. It's just not as fun on Zoom when you don't have a crowd that laughs and gives you feedback for your attempt, attempt at humor. So sorry about that. Nobody's gonna give me anything?
No. Apparently not.
You have to watch the smiles.
Yeah. Smiling over here.
Okay.
You gotta watch the eyes.
So this is the first budget that we're gonna talk about is your budget. It's a pretty tiny little budget compared to the rest of the departments, but it's a very important one because your budget and that funds your, what, what you do is really the steering wheel for the city. You steer the direction of where we all go and set the vision and priorities. So it's important to talk about your budget, just as is, it is any other budget. But as you can see there in the first two bullets, that's our attempt at summarizing what you do for the city. You do much more than that. But, you know, You know, that second bullet there where it says you adopt budget and ordinances, well, that's the process we're going through tonight and for the next few weeks. You can see your total two year budget is three hundred and thirty two thousand. And that's about one percent of the general fund. And if you go to the next slide. Here's some highlights and changes for the last year. Which is responding to the pandemic. Champion, champion climate action. Also diversity, equity and inclusion and responding to the public outcry against systemic racism, including, you know, Obama Foundation merit mayor's pledge. You did lots more in the last biennium than what you see there, but those are a couple of highlights. We're gonna need to continue to have the mayor's leadership and deputy mayor's leadership on sound transit. Mayor serves on the board, the deputy mayor serves on the elected, elected leadership group with sound transit. And it's really important that we stay involved in that to make sure that Kenmore's bus rapid transit needs are met. And then it also lists some awards that we recently received last year and this year. Which speaks to you and your vision and your, your leadership to the city. Next slide.
Next slide is the next department, so.
Can you, can you, I, one thing on city council on funding. You can see that there's actually a little bit of a reduction in your budget. The main reason, there's two main reasons for that. One is we are proposing to cut. Travel related expenses in twenty twenty one. And we're doing that citywide. We're not expecting to really travel anywhere for training and things in. Twenty twenty one, given that we think the pandemic is just gonna continue for most, if not all of twenty twenty one. So cuts in travel related expenses is one. Also, we've cut consulting services in the council budget. We used to obtain the help of a consultant to help us navigate some regional issues. And we've cut that consultant help. Okay, now we can go to city clerk.
Chasing my cursor around the screen. Are there any questions on the city council budget or anything that's preceded to this point?
Any questions? We're moving on from this, so if council member file.
Thank you. As to items that have preceded this topic. I have to wonder why we aren't considering a metropolitan parks district. Just to help our budget and help carry the load. And I do have another question, but I, I figure taking them one at a time is best.
An answer for that, Mr. City Manager, anybody?
Well, I could, I could try to take a stab at that. Yeah, a metropolitan park district would be something you'd take to the voters. For voters to approve and. You'd have to decide what the boundaries of that district would be. Would you want it to be contiguous to the city or would you want it to overlap into another city? And as, as you know, the main purpose of a park district, metropolitan park district. Is to fund park improvements and park maintenance. So yeah, a metropolitan park district would give, would have extra taxing authority, would raise additional revenues. And you could, in theory. You know, transfer some of our costs and expenses over to that. Just a little bit of background on a metropolitan park district, there's, there's different levels of parks districts. A metropolitan park district is the highest level, meaning it has the most taxing authority. It has, has its own elected board of commissioners. It can issue debt. It's more like a, it resembles a municipality. As much as it can without being a municipality. Yeah, that's up to you as a council if you want us to. Work on forming a metropolitan park district, we could. I'm not recommending it until you have. Some big capital project that you want to propose, like a. I don't know, aquatic center or recreation center or improvements on Lake Point. To me, that's when I would see the need for a metropolitan park district.
Thank you. And just to point out an added piece of information for our community. The city council does not receive any sort of health or dental sort of benefits, right?
That's right. The fringe benefits other than that's required by federal law, like, you know, paying. Medicaid and federal withholding and labor and industries and things like that.
Thank you.
One thing I did, one thing to point out is a few years ago, you, the city council established a salary commission. And back then, the city council established. Pay increases for the city council, I believe it was two percent a year. And next year, twenty twenty one will be a two percent pay increase in council salaries. In keeping with what the salary commission determined. And that'll be the last and final year of that plan that was set forth by the planning, or I mean, the salary commission.
Just out of curiosity, what would that two percent be?
Let's look at your, I can look up really quick. It's, I think it's about fifteen hundred dollars roughly for a total. No, no, for total council salaries.
Total council salary, okay, fine.
Yeah. So looking.
Hey, we did get a raise.
Looking at page eighty four. The increase in salaries. Goes up, yeah, by about fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Shared by all seven councils in here.
That's, that's correct.
I see Councilmember Marshall's hand went up. Councilmember Marshall?
Just on that real quick, of course, to be within the council's discretion to freeze our salaries or even reduce them if we wish.
You know, I actually don't think you can. That, I know that sounds weird, but once it's set by a salary commission, I don't think you can change it. But we could look that up and get back to you, or if.
City man, our city attorney is nodding her head.
That, that's correct. Once the salary, salary commission makes a determination, then for that period of time. That would control. And then even after, let's say you said it was, I think through twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
There is a constitutional requirement that councils, government officials can't. Increase or decrease salary during the period of their term. So they could set it for future terms, but you can't change it while you're in your term.
Also, a brief question, if the city manager could very briefly summarize the rest of the budget allocations in the city council budget in that three hundred and thirty.
Sure. Um, you have about, this is per year, you have seventy five thousand, well, since we're talking biennium. That hundred and fifty two thousand for salaries and wages. Ten thousand for what we call personnel benefits, but again, those are the minimums required by state and federal law. No health insurance or anything like that. And then you have eighty eight hundred in supplies. Hundred and fifty nine thousand in services and twelve hundred in capital and outlay and. So that, that gets you to a total of three hundred and thirty two thousand.
Could I, could I add to that?
Please.
So it may be interesting for you to know that within the council budget are the, the retreat expenses. Which are considerable for, you know, all the retreat activities and the facilitator, et cetera. Also within the council budget, you pay for memberships with AWC, Sound Cities, PSRC. So these are, are recurring memberships and affiliations that all have dues associated with them. And pretty much all of those are contained within the council budget as well.
And of course, those memberships to. Sound Cities Association and the Washington Association for Washington Cities is really important. For the continuing education and training of our municipal leaders, right?
Yeah, and not just that, but also the advocacy and the research they do on behalf of cities is really important.
All right, any other questions?
Councilmember Shrubnik's raising her hand.
Who? Shrubnik, yes, Councilmember Shrubnik?
I, I was going with Councilmember Marshall's impulse as well. Sounds like in twenty twenty one, we can't do anything and I'm not quite understanding our city attorney's comment that we. I guess what I would wonder is if we could go ahead and propose the freeze for the twenty twenty two. Since that is in the next biennium and we're talking about the biennium budget. But I wasn't quite clear from the city attorney about the comment of we can't do it within a term, we have overlapping terms. So I, I mean, I'm not sure how that, how, how that works.
Let me get back on, so I am not familiar with your own salary commission. I'm familiar with the general topic, but I don't know if you've adopted it by way of ordinance or code, so I need to go look at that. I don't know if it expires or not, but let's just take the salary commission out of the equation. If the city council was in fact just looking at its own salary, either an increase or a decrease. You would have to stage that for the terms. Even if they are, you know, they are not at the same time, you would have to step it up. So for example, you'd say people on these terms for these years. It increases or decreases after this term is over and then you do it for the next ones also. I, I have drafted ordinances like that. You just can't do it for your existing term.
Yeah.
So then in reality, that means that. Someone who is up in two years would not be affected, but somebody who was up in four years would be. When their term was over, vice versa.
When their terms are over.
Right.
But, but, but let me clarify, that's the reason that people, I'm sorry, cities. Create salary commissions because they can, in fact. Raise or in, or decrease council salaries during terms. Because it's not the council making those choices.
So therefore it takes effect for everybody all at once.
Correct.
Wouldn't it cost money to administer that though? I mean, this isn't a large amount of money, so I would be concerned about the, kind of the cost offset there.
The last time we did it, which was a few years ago, we used volunteers in the community and we staffed it.
That's correct. We, there's really no out of pocket cost for the commission.
And I have a point of order in terms of, I, I don't know our process well enough. I know I should after a couple of years, but this is only my, I think my second budget like this. Do we make motions at this point? I don't, I don't remember exactly what, how we go through this.
Um, yeah, this is more or less questions and answers on the budget. If you want to propose something dealing with the budget, then you certainly could.
Okay.
Right now, we've talked about the council member port, the council portion of the budget. If you wanted to make a motion. Dealing with that, then you could.
Excuse me, Mayor Baker?
Councilmember File?
Thank you. I understand part of the reasoning for a council budget. Is to create a pathway of equity for participation in municipal leadership. And that was one of the, the grounding principles when this budget for the council was last discussed with this increase. As that helps create a better equitable arm for. People who would otherwise not be able to participate municipal leadership. Due to social economic differences. And that's an equity issue.
So, Councilmember Shrubnik. Did you want to make a motion?
Um, yeah, I would be willing to make a motion. To. Freeze our salary, you know, at the, well, I mean, I guess I. Don't know how to make this motion because, I mean, I suppose you could make a motion for a count, a, a commission, but I, I. I, I guess I would prefer to just make it for the, the freezing at the earliest.
According to the city attorney, if I understood her correctly, you can freeze for twenty twenty two, you can't.
Right, exactly, which would be part of the biennium. It would be the second half of the biennium. And it, of course, it doesn't have a huge impact. I think it's more that we recognize that we're. I mean, I think one of our citizens made it very clear, you know, it's a skin in the game issue. And. So yes, I, I'm making a motion to do that.
Is there a second?
Can I make a suggestion prior to a second? Um, I think it would be much clearer if I can provide the process and how that would look like.
Yes.
For a discussion.
That'd be great.
Okay. Then I'm, I'm happy to do that.
At a later date?
Yes, yes.
Fine. All right, any other questions dealing on the council budget?
I do.
Yes, Councilmember Curtis.
Just a quick comment on this. Staff time is really valuable. So to add a lot of, any extra staff time for the few bucks we're gonna save, I don't think is worth the effort.
Anybody else? Anybody else? All right. I think we're ready to move on. Next department or next area.
Okay, the next department is the city clerks department and I'll speak on behalf of that. I worked on that budget. Without too much input from the current city clerk because she was still. Learning the ropes here, but it's not too different from what we have had in the past. Of course, you know, the city. Clerk supports the council by preparing agendas and attending your meetings and producing minutes. She also is responsible for records management across the city. The municipal code and keeping that up to date when ordinances are passed or changes are made. And she's the custodian of official city documents. And the human services funding budget is in the city clerk's budget. And we'll talk more about that after I go through these few talking points. The budget is nine hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. It has increased one point nine percent over the current biennium. It's a small part of the total budget and there's only one FTE. And I will go into the reasons for the increase. So not too long ago, the city council approved. A project that would upgrade the audio visual capabilities of the city council. We've negotiated or entered into a financing arrangement for a four year lease. And so each two years of that four year lease will be included in the upcoming budget. It's forty, about forty two thousand dollars a year. So that added eighty five thousand dollars to the city clerk's budget. Also, human services funds are computed based on a per capita amount and our. Population has increased since we last developed this budget two years ago. So there's a slight six thousand four hundred dollar increase in human services. And we bumped up the voter registration and election costs a bit. Anticipating that this year will have extraordinary voter registration and election turnout for which we. for which we will have to pay dearly next year. Some of the priority-based budget programs that the city clerk office provides, we took a look at what was in quartile one and of course, no surprise that preparing council agendas and minutes, which are governance programs, was a big part of this budget as well as providing administrative support to the city council. These were the highest cost programs and also considered to be the governance programs that yielded transparency and accountability and highest results for the city. So before, I don't want to leave the city clerk's budget, but as I said, a big chunk of the budget is the human service funding and it comes out to about $175,000, $176,000 a year if you apply the 753 per capita amount to the population. And at this time, I'm going to pull up another document that we can review that will show the recommendations for human services funding in this next biennium that were developed by Rita Moreno and Nancy Alsley due to the departure of Kelly Chellin, who had been involved in human services work. And with Anastasia coming on so recently, she did not have time to get up to speed on this. So the city manager's office graciously took this on this year and they can speak, speak to that. So I'm going to, I don't know, Anastasia, can you, can you unshare this screen and let me share another screen? Can I, let me try. Okay. Okay. So that is great. Where is that? Summary of funds. Can I ask what you saw on your screen? Do you see? A spreadsheet with human service agencies listed? Micro in size, if I can increase it for you.
Yes, human, yes, human service agencies.
Let me know when it's.
There you go. It's readable.
Go, keep going. I'm wearing my bifocals now. It's, now it's getting close.
That's better.
Thank you. That's great.
This is perfect.
Okay, all right. And at this point, I will turn it over to Rita and Nancy and I'll let Rita kick this off and explain to you what the process.
Hello, sorry. Hi, so I, we received 36 applications requesting a total amount of $253,964. Nancy Alsley and I met and discussed and went over all of the applications and this is our recommendations was to fund 25 programs with a proposed amount of $175,600. So as you can see, these are the listed agencies. We had 25 of those, out of 25 of those agencies, five of them will be receiving additional funding from the CARES Act. That is the Center for Human Services, Hope Link, Mary's Place, North Shore Schools Foundation and North Shore Senior Center. And then we also are, I'm a part of the Human Services Funding Collaborative, which is the Alliance of the Cities in the East, North and South King County. And those cities are Auburn, Bellevue, Burien, Covington, Des Moines, Federal Way, Issaquah, Kenmore, Kent, Kirkland, Redmond, Renton, Sammamish, Sea-Tac, Shoreline and Toquilla. And Bellevue takes the lead on that funding.
So Auburn and Des Moines are included?
Yes.
Whoa.
It is Alliance of Cities in the East, North and South King County, so.
And I would just point out that this is attached to the agenda, the memo that preceded this, plus this spreadsheet. Since I can't get it all on the screen at one time, there is a link on the agenda where you can, can view it and print it.
It also came in an email from Mr. Carlin C. last Friday, I believe it was.
Comment?
Yes, Councilmember Curtis.
So there's somewhere in our packet, there was also a list of agencies that not, did not receive funding this year. And my only concern there was the Lake City Group that deals with homelessness. I, it just felt kind of concerning to me. You know, there may not be enough money to go around and I understand that, but the homeless issue is important.
Would you like me to go ahead and respond now or?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we did have a conversation in regards to that. We do have some of the CARES money that is still able to get moved around. So that was one of the conversations we had and I'm not sure if Rob or Nancy wants to chime in on that.
This is Nancy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That is, is correct and and we, you know, welcome the council's discussion on this, but I think that we will have additional funds for for community services through some of the CARES funds. I wanted to just make a quick comment about the alliance and one benefit of this is for the agencies themselves, they can file one application instead of separate applications to all these different cities. So it really makes things much more efficient for the, the human service agencies. And just like, just like you're hearing tonight, we have added in addition to some of the, some of the agencies that are, are being funded through the alliance, some more local human service agencies that are ones that are a priority for, for the community, not necessarily part of the alliance administration.
I think that's one thing that we as a council have always tried to do is to make sure Kenmore residents get, get as much of the human services funding as we can. To fund other, to fund other cities and not Kenmore is, has always been a problem. So on that note, could I ask about NAMI, the NAMI East Side in schools? Which Kenmore schools are they supporting?
They are supporting Kenmore Middle and High Schools in Kenmore.
Great.
May Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I just would like to build off of what Councilmember Curtis did mention. And with this agency that had been overlooked one year and we do know regionally, there was a discussion about budget and supporting our, our communities through the winter months and the issues around surrounding homelessness. And COVID directly impacts that. The amount of beds are going to be less in each shelter space. And I would hope that with the added COVID funds that we might be able to utilize and support this organization, we certainly were able to get people into permanent housing, 124 families into permanent housing the last time we assisted them. I know this is a priority for our community and we only need to do our part as cities in our region in the efforts to combat homelessness. And so I would support allocating some funds that way to fulfill that request to do our part. Thank you.
Mayor Baker, this is Councilmember Shrubnik. I don't know if I'm next. Okay, a couple of questions. I'm not remembering how, how much you said Lake City Partners was, was requesting, but my, my other question though, there's a few of these that have pretty marked increases and I guess I'm curious why, for example, North Shore Senior Center, you know, were more than doubling the allocation. I'm not saying that it's not a good thing. I just, I don't really understand the rate of increase of some of these, Sound Generation Volunteer Transport. And then in particular, the East Side Baby Corner I had a question about and the Health Point Dental. And for the East Side Baby Corner, I just want to make sure, I guess I have a question about whether that is a religious organization at its core. And same with, well, I'm not sure about the Lake City Partners piece. There's, and in terms of the, just as a point of clarification, I mean, we do have the isolation and quarantine centers and sufficient bed capacity countywide for folks with COVID that are homeless. So I don't know that the, the COVID argument is, it isn't persuasive to me, but I mean, there's certainly always need for more permanent supported housing for folks. That's where the real need is as opposed to shelter, I guess, in my, from my perspective.
Rita or Nancy, can you answer that?
The questions were really around the increases of those few that I mentioned.
I'm looking at North Shore Senior Center and I see a thousand dollar from $8,000 increase.
It looks like 2,000 to 5,000? Am I reading it wrong? 2019 to 2021?
I'm looking at the requested amount and what was awarded, but clarification.
Yeah, so when these organizations apply through the Share One app, which is through the the app that all these cities are using, where they can do the one application, within that form is why the increase, how it's going to be used. So it's, it's a lot more information on the backend that I can get to. I don't, it would be me going into each application again into our Excel spreadsheets and pulling that information to see what, you know, with the increases on those specific ones.
Councilmember O'Kane and Deputy Mayor Herbig.
I was just going to echo Councilmember Curtis and File. I would support more funding towards homelessness. Especially, although the county has beds for people with COVID, what I have a great concern about is unemployment impacting people in our community and people needing space. It's, it's been projected and we can all kind of feel it coming that we are going to be seeing an increase in actual homelessness given our current economic conditions. So I think if we can give a second look at that and find a way to increase the budget in that area, I think it's something I would, I definitely would support. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So comment and a question. One, I do generally support what Councilmember Curtis and File and O'Kane have said. I think Lake City Partners, when they came to Kenmore a couple of years ago and hosted a shelter over at the, the church, they were a very, I think, from what I, everything I could see, a good partner with the city until we change our regulations and they essentially can't come to Kenmore anymore, but they were generally a good partner. And they are serving the entire area and they are trying to get a more permanent shelter set up instead of a rotating one over in Shoreline right now is my understanding. And two, I wanted to ask Nancy and Rita kind of, is there a set process for how you're evaluating and coming to these conclusions or like, what, what process were you going through to get from the requested 300,000 plus down to the 25 recommended for funding?
I can begin the response on that. And that was generally, we did look at what the city provided to the agency previous year and tried to stick as close as we could to, to that. And for those, for those certain agencies that may have, maybe recommended they get an extra thousand from, from where they were the most, the most recent year. You know, we can certainly scale those, those numbers back. And also wanted to just respond to Councilmember O'Kane's question on the, the dental services. I think that it's, it's something that, that people will, you know, skimp on if, if they're having financial issues and, and particularly for, for younger people that, that can have health effects and, and, and longer-term effects. But if you would prefer that we stick pretty close to, super close to what, what was provided in, in the previous years and, and we can certainly look at those adjustments, bring them back for later in the budget process.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is just to, it, I'm trying to figure out how kind of systematic we are or how many guidelines we have in place for, for how these funds are, are allocated. In a perfect world, I would very much like this to not be a council decision on a line-by-line, line item-by-line on a basis because then I think we're making political decisions on these human services things. I don't think that's, I don't think that's a good look for us either, but I want to make sure that we have, that we have guiding principles or guidelines for staff who are putting together these lists that reflect what the council, you know, direction from the council and that we can rely on so that when we get these decisions, you know, and I'm not questioning this list. I'm just trying to get a better idea of kind of the framework behind what got us this list.
And, and an important element that I did neglect to mention is how accessible the services are to people in the community. That is, that is a big factor. And, and how, you know, local, any of, any of these services are. That's, that's a major factor. And then also, as I mentioned, if there's been a history of city support for a program or, or an agency in the past. And particularly in times like these, it's, it's like the basics, you know, food, shelter, healthcare are priorities.
Councilmember File and Councilmember Shrubnik.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I just, I really appreciate all the work you, our city does put into preparing this budget for us. And I think it is important that we, you support our local partners, surrounding partners and reducing homelessness and providing shelter support through funding. I do understand the reason for the dental care costs and we know regionally, that's one of the top needed items amongst those who are living in impoverished means, severely low income, let alone our homeless population. And there is a direct correlation between poor dental health and heart disease and, and nutrition issue. and nutrition issues for seniors. So I'm happy to see this public health need fulfilled. On the issue of housing and sheltering, my city of Kenmore did pass an ordinance a while ago. It's now in direct opposition of state-formed legislation. And I know that our two churches who did provide homeless shelter space through nonprofit organizations on their own premises don't any longer need our permission, but they prefer to have our partnership. And I believe that we should haul that item back forward so that we can work together with our partners and help do our part of addressing the homelessness crisis here in Kenmore.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, I, oh, and maybe I muted. Nope, I'm not. So I, I have kind of the same impulse and you could tell from my earlier questions as Deputy Mayor Herbig. I, and being in human services also wanting to kind of feel like we have a structure and a framework for how we're allocating these. And of course, there's, you know, an infinite need. So I think it would be fruitful, not tonight and maybe not even for this budget, but maybe for our retreat, to have a proposal and do some chewing on, you know, what would, what would a set of criteria look like going forward? Both for original allocation and then for changes to that allocation. You know, what would our priorities be? Is it content oriented? Is it number of, you know, people that are served in the city? Is it, you know, I would also like to see, you know, lack of redundancy in funding and service. You know, we want to have a unique contribution, I would think. And so I think there's some angles that we'll want to look at. I, you know, this isn't a huge amount of money and of course, all of these things need money. So I mean, there's, there's, there's no question. I guess my concern is that there's kind of an infinite need and at some point, we need to have a structure.
So just to kind of answer Deputy Mayor, there, in the memo that was sent out, there is the funding criteria on there. It's a list of about 10 items, which is how we came about. This is the criteria that was used the last time that they were going through this whole process. So hopefully that helps, answers some of the questions on how we reached this. Oh, yeah, thank you.
Comment.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yeah, when we first developed this set of criteria, a lot of work went into it. And there were spreadsheets with every single requesting agency and whether, how they scored on each of these criteria. So I think there's a lot of behind the scenes stuff that is happening that we're not seeing. I'm not sure we need to redo this. I think just a reminder perhaps of all the work that's really back there. I guess what I would like to suggest, rather than making a motion, is just I would like to ask the staff to come up with some recommendation, how much money might be able to put into that homeless Lake City project? Not make the total any bigger, but just take some small amounts from somewhere and give them a little bit. And just let the staff kind of give us a recommendation.
Oh, can I jump in on that?
Sure.
Please.
Yeah, just to further reiterate what Nancy said a minute ago, there is Coronavirus Relief Fund that, or that type of thing. There are, there are restrictions. It has to be pandemic related and the money has to be spent by end of November of this year. But if Lake City Partners can demonstrate that their needs are pandemic related and that they have expenditures that they've incurred this year because of the pandemic, then we can provide funding for them through the Coronavirus Relief Fund.
And I might add too, we can, if the council desires, we can totally take another look at amounts recommended and see if there is a way to direct some funds to that program.
Can I just get a clarification? Lake City Partners, are they providing services to Kenmore residents? Or are they doing Shoreline?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Rita to respond to that, but I do recall seeing something from the, from the agency that, that, you know, they are setting up a shelter in Shoreline and that would certainly be of service to people in the Kenmore area.
I think they track where people come from so they can tell us how many were Kenmore people, as I remember from their reports before.
I'd really like to keep taxpayers' money benefiting Kenmore residents. Anybody else? Are we about ready to move on? Councilmember O'Kane.
I just had a quick comment. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't have the question about the dental costs. And I just want to be clear that I support any funding that we can give towards healthcare. I think it's incredibly important for our community, especially for people in need. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Thank you.
All right. We're about ready to move on. Anybody else with questions? All right. Ms. Gregory.
Okay, thank you. Did the budget screen for the city manager magically come up? No, I have to stop sharing the other document.
I've got a memorandum up.
Oh, okay. No, give me a moment. Stop sharing. Re-share. Here we go. So the city manager's department should be the next one on your screen. In yellow.
Got it.
You see some heads nodding, so I'll turn this over then to Nancy. How's Lee? Thank you.
Nancy, I can.
Yeah, I think Rob was going to begin and I'll, I'll interrupt like I always do.
All right, yeah, so the city manager's office. The name is kind of deceiving. We do more than just house the city manager. We have a lot of programs, including recreation, events, communications, and other services that we provide, public records requests and city council support and many other things. Economic development. So you can see that we're actually looking at a reduction in the budget from 2022. A lot of that has to do with reduction in economic development resources and programs. And we can talk a little bit more in detail, but yes, thank you. So for this next slide, we're proposing to retain the halftime recreation coordinator position. And remember, that was a new position in the last biennium and we made it a two-year position. But given the benefits and how it's been able to make a big difference in the community, we're proposing to keep that position. The Kenmore Business Incubator Program released the city's participation and it will end at the end of this year. And we'll continue to have leadership in sound transit, state legislative agenda, other intergovernmental work.
Also, go ahead and finish your sentence. I just wanted to go back to incubator for a second when you're finished.
I was going to talk about our contribution to ARCH. So why don't you do Kenmore Business Incubator and ARCH?
Okay. As Rob mentioned, the city's support for the incubator program will end as proposed at the end of this year. But we would like to be back at council sometime next month to have a longer briefing about the incubator, particularly for some of the newer council members. This program began in 2013 and we are very hopeful that there will continue to be comparable resources in the city after this year. So we'll have more to say about that in a few weeks. Looking forward to having that discussion. Also, you'll, you'll see in the city manager's office, a couple of line items that are contributions to Regional Coalition for Housing. So that we are one of, number of Eastside, North End cities in that consortium. And that we know is a priority for council this year. And so you'll see a contribution, not only for the administrative functions of the, of the organization, but for actual money that does go for affordable housing projects. Also, you'll see our dues for the East City Gov Alliance. That, that's also a consortium of mostly east side jurisdictions. And one of their main projects and/or products is mybuildingpermit.com, which is, you know, a very innovative and well-developed program. Brian Hampson can speak more to that. And, and other efficiencies that we've been able to achieve by partnering up with other jurisdictions on some IT issues.
Also in the city manager's budget is funding for the state lobbyist. We used to have funding for the federal lobbyist, but we cut that as part of the budget cuts earlier this year. And that cut continues into the next biennium. And if you wouldn't be a good guess, or you might wonder why animal control is in the city manager's budget. Because we can't find.
Because it's one of those intergovernmental delightful things. We're part of the regional animal services consortium with King County. They provide the enforcement. We have a separate contract for sheltering with paws. So that, that does reside because of the regional nature of that program. Rob mentioned that we are maintaining some of the efficiencies that, that were identified earlier this year. As far as some of the, some consultant contracts, the federal lobbyist, but also media relations consultant contract is ending. And so you'll, you'll see that we have, have maintained the, the mid-biennium cuts that, that were adopted. Also, just because of, of, you know, the huge changes in all of our lives this year, you'll see a reduction in this budget for some of the citywide events because we're, we're just not able to be on the same scale as, as we have in the past. So certainly, at least for '21, we're being very judicious about the scale and number of events. And then also, we're going to maintain our, our recent shift for the quarterly newsletter to go from a printed version to an electronic version, which, which has happened. Our second issue of the quarterly just came out on an electronic platform. But we have printed a limited number of hard copies that can be available to senior center and, and other people who have a, have a preference for a hard copy.
Quick question on that.
Yes, please. Deputy Mayor.
So Nancy, when you're talking about a select number of copies still getting printed, are you looking at having them at the library, at the hangar, at other kind of public places where people can grab a copy if they?
Exactly. Of course, the library isn't open at the, at the present time. But, but it will be available at some point, but definitely the hangar, senior center. And, and then like if there are, you know, specific individual requests, we will do our best to, to honor them. If you haven't had a chance to look at the electronic version of the newsletter, it's, it's pretty cool. You can actually hear the pages turning when you read it.
I'm sure it's nice. I do worry though about, I mean, I felt like the paper newsletter was a valuable tool for, just for outreach and for letting people, for keeping people on top of things. You know, I doubt that we're, that we have email addresses for, for, you know, every household in the city. You know, so we may need to make a bigger effort, making people aware that they need to sign up for the emails if they want to keep accessing what they've been getting every quarter in their inbox, in their, in their mailbox.
Yeah, on the same hand, we've got to be careful not inundate them with emails. So if they want a newsletter, that's all they get is a newsletter.
Oh, right.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, I have, sorry, I had the same, same response. I liked the online version. I found it actually a little challenging to get through that way. It was a little bit fiddly. And I, and I have the same concern that it is not, we're not getting, we're really radically changing the way we communicate with the public if we're no longer routinely getting out to every address. So I, I do have concerns about just sort of eliminating that. I would prefer we don't. And maybe you said this and I just missed it. I might have zoned out for a minute. How, how much did it cost to actually send that out? How much are we saving by not doing that?
I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I think I might have it.
There's something about feeling pages turn.
My main concern is, is less about the technology and more that we're just missing probably half of the city.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think mailing the newsletter citywide for four quarters, probably in the neighborhood of $15,000.
Oh, yeah, I, well, I would like to keep that if it were me, but.
Well, it's certainly, you know, discussion we can have.
I would support that as well.
Well, if I can, so I live in the city and getting the newsletter in the mail is a big deal for me. Because I want to make, you know, so I really, I'm really looking for it. And I asked my wife, did you, did you get it yet? And, but that's me and I'm, I'm a city nerd. But then what I do is I ask my neighbors and friends at church, people who live around here at Kenmore, in Kenmore. And I say, did you get our newsletter? No. Are you sure? No, yeah, I didn't get it. Well, I get a lot of junk mail, so I probably just chucked it. And pretty much everybody I ask says, no, they didn't get it. They don't remember seeing it. And this is just like days after it comes. I just think that a lot of people see it as junk mail and chuck it.
Councilmember File and Councilmember O'Kane.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. You know, I also support keeping our newsletter. It's really important that we're reaching out to our community who do not have internet access and do not have the ability to connect that way. And with a limited number of materials being available in more restricted. in more restricted places, it's even more difficult to connect. And I had the wonderful opportunity of talking to a community member in the grocery store today. And he didn't realize we were passing out masks because he does not have a computer, and he is a local senior who resides within our community. And that's just not a comfortable thing for him to utilize. He's not the first person I've come across this way. And it's important that we maintain our ability to connect to our constituents and our neighbors. And if people want to opt out of service, I think, why not make that the option for them to opt out rather than just eliminate the resource? Because I, too, have always enjoyed receiving the newsletter. My kids, when growing up, and when younger, enjoyed the newsletter. And it became one of those things they also brought to school sometimes and shared with their classmates. So I think our newsletter serves a great service to our community, and I would like to keep that.
Councilmember O'Kane.
And I'd like to echo that. I can share, when I first moved back here several years ago, and I started receiving those newsletters in the mail, I loved them. And they inspired me, and they helped me to get more involved in our community. And I would say pieces like our newsletter made a difference to me even running for council. It helped me to get engaged. And with the flood of emails, for me, a piece of paper in the mail every three months, I'll notice it. If we're getting it every month, it might kind of flow away. But I really appreciate our emails, and I think we do a good job with them. But I do understand the savings that are there. But I also can say, I'm a person who throws away every piece of junk. But I receive those newsletters, and this was before I ran for office, before I chose to take this path. I did look forward to them. I may have been an oddball, but I can share that I really appreciate our newsletters. So thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, and just to go back to what I was saying earlier, I'm not saying that we need to keep up quarterly mailing myself, but I think, I don't know, I think it kind of creates a sense of connection to the city that an email won't for folks. And I think even something, even something twice a year could help, could continue doing that, still save us, and still give us some cost savings, so.
Let us come back and have some revised numbers for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor Baker, can we take a pause and take a little five-minute stretch?
Certainly.
Could we just quickly finish this one?
Yes, please.
And then take a break?
Yes.
I don't know if you want to jump in now, Rob, but on the priority-based budgeting, in addition to leadership to the organization, the other quartile one scores, highest scores, were for this department, council support and promoting organizational health. And I know you're aware of, because you see it every Friday in the weekly update, how many public records requests the department feels and responds to in accordance with the state requirements. And we're very, very proud of our new website and how that has made, you know, information about the city and the ability to connect with the community and the world at large more efficient and convenient for people. So we're pleased that previous budgets allowed for the design and rolled out of a new website. Rob, do you want to say anything in closing?
No, I think we've covered it.
All right, let's take five. Well, let's hold it to five so we can get through this, because it's starting to get late.
And Mayor, I'm here, just so that, you know, it's Councilmember O'Kane.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Kane.
I'm just eating a little snack, so I'm just, I've turned off my video just for, until I get it finished.
So am I.
Okay.
Same here.
I eat my snack after council. It's a way of rewarding myself for working hard.
Is everyone back?
Um, possibly. It looks like yes, everybody is back. Let's go ahead and pick it up. Ms. Gregory?
Yes, okay, well, let's move on to the Finance and Administration Department. So this is my department, and just briefly, I'm sure you know what it entails, but it's, you know, the finance, accounting, and budget. We also have been responsible for personnel, risk management, and IT. Everything from payroll to audit, HR matters, office supplies, grant reporting. And even though the city clerk has a distinct budget, supervision is provided from my department for the city clerk. My '21-'22 budget is $2.5 million, and it is a 29% increase over the prior year budget. And it's a fairly good chunk of the overall general fund at 9%. And currently comprises three FTEs and is proposing four. So you are aware that one of the budget proposals that we are making, and the dollars are included in this budget, is for a new human resources manager to be added to the staff. So my budget includes for two years, salary benefits, some supplies, furniture, training, and technology. So that accounts for the significant increase. That's the bulk of it. There's a small increase in software. As Nancy Elsley mentioned earlier, the East City Gov Alliance has provided a number of functions to the cities over the years. And we've taken advantage of the mybuildingpermit.com process. And I have always been really pleased and fortunate to be able to utilize their govjobsday.com reporting, recruiting tool. Well, that ends this year, and Bellevue and the East City Gov Alliance will no longer be in that business. So they have facilitated a transition to a new software for the city. And it's very reasonably priced and was priced at the same level as what we would have paid through GovJobs. So there's new recruiting software in there. But another reason for a big increase in my department, because many of my department's expenditures are non-discretionary, such as IT maintenance and human resources and all that goes with that, is in my department is the liability and property insurance premiums for the city. Some of that is allocated to the streets fund and to the surface water fund, but the bulk of it is in the general fund. And this premium has really gone up significantly over the years. If you look down below, the costliest program that resides in the Finance Department, driven by premiums of $491,000 over two years, is, it's a big chunk. And for 2021, the premium is $382,000, which is a 16% increase over last year. Last year was a 13% increase over the prior year. And we don't, we're not a city that has huge claims. That's only a small part of it. But the liability is driven in large part by worker hours. And as we have grown and brought on more staff, temporary staff, public work staff, our, you know, our worker hours have increased, which drives the liability portion of our insurance premium. And we receive a lot of services. But by belonging to the Washington Cities Insurance Authority, they have a really excellent pre-defense program. They provide tons of excellent training throughout the year in topics from personnel, risk management, contracting, public works, and park skill development. So I can't say that it's not worth it. I just want you to recognize that's a big, it's a big cost to the city. So when that goes up, it drives my budget up as well. Our quartile one programs in the Finance Department, again, we're a governance-driven department, include the biennial budget preparation. A lot of dollars in my department are allocated to that task as well as compliance with the annual audit, which is another governance program. And those are both considered quartile one programs. But the one that costs us the most specifically in terms of staff time plus the premiums is the risk management program. So with that, are there any questions about the Finance and Administration Department or the Human Resources Manager proposal?
Questions? Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Just to be clear for our community, I know that our Human Resource Manager, Finance Manager yourself, has done the job of two people. And you've done an incredible service for our community. But coming with that and serving the city, the commander, Kimore, as we grow and have grown, it's risky to spread our city staff too thin. And so I can understand why we need this Human Resource Manager separation and Finance Administrator Director as a separate positions. So I can support that. I am concerned, though, that 16% increase seems really high. And I have to wonder- though, that 16% increase seems really high, and I have to wonder, have we had occurrences that have driven up our rates, or do we need to shop for better premiums?
Well, that's a really interesting question. It's a tough question to answer as far as shopping premiums, because with the pool, and it's a self-insured pool, we have various layers of coverage that ensure all of the pool members that I doubt that we could successfully attain on our own as an independent, small city. You know what I think might be interesting for the council, and it's not something that we've really done in the time that I've been here, is have the pool come and present to the council and talk about the various layers of insurance, the hard market that we operate in, that everybody operates in, especially with this pandemic, and especially with, even though we don't have our employees are not police officers, they're a contract, so they don't drive our premiums and our risk. But in the environment of all the cities in the pool, many do have their own police departments, and you can understand where that risk is probably going as well in driving up premiums. So, it might be really interesting for you all to hear directly from the source what is going on in the insurance market. And again, it's not our property or vehicles or equipment. It's primarily liability and that type of risk. So, my recommendation would not be to shop this until you understand and hear more in more detail than I can provide tonight, why this is an advantage to belonging to this pool. But it's really a good question.
Any other questions?
I just attended the WCIA full board meeting on Friday morning, and that was the main topic of conversation on how tough the insurance industry is right now. They're just taking a beating, and they're raising rates to try to make up for it. Some insurance companies are just dropping clients. Others are reducing coverages. And so, they did talk about the rate increases, and what's going on in the insurance industry right now is the biggest reason for those rate increases.
Any other questions? With the split screen, I'm not seeing everybody, so there does not appear to be any more questions at this time. Ms. Gregory?
Yes?
Are you finished with this section?
I am. I just want to make sure that if there are any questions, we have an opportunity to...
I'm looking, but I'm not seeing any hands go up.
Okay. Anyway, I really encourage you all to learn more about the WCIA pool and and then compare that to options, you know, other options that might exist. But okay, well, then we'll move into the legal budget, which is a very simple budget that we provide for our city attorney, who provides services to the council and the administration and the staff, specifically provided by Inslee Best and, in our case, Don Reitton. And as you know, she provides attendance at council meetings, advice on policy matters, legal guidance and support.
Do we have to pay for that?
Oh, well, you could ask Dawn, I suppose. I think it's probably very well worth it. She keeps us out of trouble, and sometimes we really need her expert opinion.
I'm just teasing.
I know you are. So, the budget this year, we've provided for $565,000 over the two-year period, which is a decrease from the current budget. We're hoping that, you know, in the next biennium, when all the matters of the pandemic and code enforcement issues will be dampened down and somewhat resolved, that we can keep this budget to an appropriate size of about $270,000 a year. It's a very small part of the budget, but it's a very crucial part of the budget, and there are no FTEs, as you know, because it is provided through a contract. And the programs that the legal department provides in the context of priority-based budgeting, internal legal support and advisement, and council meeting supporter in the second quartile, amount to about $285,000.
And this does not include the special legal services that we have budgeted for the emissions issue. That's funded out of Strategic Opportunities Fund.
That's correct. That's correct. There are another, a number of initiatives sponsored out of the Strategic Opportunities Fund. And as we go through this budget, you know, I was listening to some comments earlier. The general fund doesn't fund capital projects either, and I think this came up in the context of the boathouse, that our operating budget is not supporting capital project costs. So, were we not to do a particular park project or boathouse project, those capital costs would not be reflected as a savings to the general fund, and I wanted to point that out here. But we will talk about what is being funded out of the Strategic Opportunities Fund, rather than out of the general fund at a later date in the budget review. So, there any questions about the legal budget?
Questions? No, I do not see any hands go up.
Okay, well, then I am going to transition to our Police Chief.
This is Councilmember Shrubnik. I just had a quick one. We do have, other than Dawn, other folks that are advising, particularly when we get into executive session, are those also reflected? Those are also in the legal budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so this is a good time for Brandon Moen to join us, and he can talk about the Public Safety Budget.
Great, thank you. So, the Public Safety Budget, a lot of things fall into it under the Public Safety umbrella, namely, the police services, jail services, court services, prosecutor, and public defense all fall under that. The lion's share is, as you know, the police services, where we provide the 24/7 law enforcement for the city through a contract with the King County Sheriff's Office, and that is really, that contract is all-inclusive of all the things that are necessary, such as the communications center, the 911 call receivers, the 911 dispatchers, major crimes investigators, brain unit, arson investigators, internal investigations, training unit, all of those things are all built into this contract. In terms of the jail services, we continue to contract with the SCORE Jail, the South Correctional Entity down in Des Moines, for misdemeanor bookings, and with King County for some misdemeanor bookings on unique circumstances, as well as some of situations where certain persons might be serving their sentence on work release supervised through King County through that contract. Court services continue to be through the King County District Court and Shoreline, again, for misdemeanor offenses, as well as infractions of any type. And our prosecutor services continue to use Sarah Roberts, Kenmore City Prosecutor and public defender of SMH. It's not on the slide. It's also included in the public defense realm, is the King County Defense Screening Services that are provided through contract with them for initial screenings at first appearance for some offenders. So, as you can see, the total budget for the biennium is about $9.1 million. Again, all inclusive of police, jail, courts, prosecutor, public defense, accounts for around a third of the general fund. The police portion of the FTEs dedicated the city around, well, they are 14, not around, they are 14 FTEs, including myself, one detective, and 12 assigned patrol officers. In terms of this budget compared to pass, if you compare the proposed budget to the initially proposed 2019 and 2020 budget, that was less than 1%. This is less than a 1% increase. If we look at the post-COVID kind of modified budget that we ended up this year, or going to end it this year, it's closer to a 2% increase. So, some of the changes, no changes in terms of the police services themselves, no increases, no decreases for FTEs. The jail and court costs were able to decrease, and we discussed this previously this year with some renegotiation of the jail contract, as well as in years moving forward, finding some savings in the manner in which sentences are being served at the jail and really for defenses and booking individuals with a little more discretion for certain offenses. So, that's helped lower some of the costs. The city, as proposed, would end their contribution to the School Resource Officer Program with the North Shore School District. That is supposed in this current budget. We would increase, actually would start contributing really to the Radar Navigator Program, so that we could dedicate correspondent time with the mental health professional navigators on a regular basis within the city. As we've discussed before, the Radar Program is currently funded through a combination of grants, as well as King County government mid-funding. So, this is kind of augmenting those funds and allowing us to, again, contribute more to the amount of time that the MHPs and navigators are out writing with the officers and doing outreach. The additional training for officers is something we talked about during the Obama Foundation's Samir's Pledge process, spreading some very specific training in certain areas to the officers over the course of the next two years, in the areas of peer intervention, de-escalation, and bias awareness. This is beyond what we already get in some of those areas that are provided by the county. And increase, we're always trying to do, increase community outreach and increasing our community policing efforts. Something we've really taken on here recently, trying to increase as much as we can. Along those lines, the National Light Out event continues to be funded in the future. We're, as we've discussed previously, the nurturing trust workshops, we're going to hopefully add in the spring if COVID will allow us to, and this is something we'd like to continue in the future as part of our community-oriented policing efforts. Again, in terms of our PPP programs, the Norsun Radar, increased emphasis and investment in that program, some school event sponsorships, we still want to continue having a presence in the schools, even if it's not in the SRO program. So, there is a bit of funding for that. And we would also like to, as we move forward, should the photo enforcement program move forward, as proposed, we would need to support the engineering department in the implementation and management of that program, because our officers would have to review each infraction before it's officially issued, again, if, should that program move forward. And with that, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions? Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Marshall.
What was the rough amount of the jail and court cost decrease?
Very roughly, let's see here. From 2019, the last biennium to now, neighborhood of $200,000 to 250,000, very rough numbers.
Deputy Mayor?
Are we going to be seeing some sort of agreement with King County on that additional radar contribution and how that's going to be spent?
So, that money is managed in-house, so we can spend that money as we see fit. Radar Program really is not directly related to the Sheriff's Office in any way, other than where the officers are out assisting in the program. The program is actually managed by someone, a program manager, who originally worked for King County Mid and now manages the Radar Program for us, and they operate out of the city of Bothell. So, in terms of how we want that money spent and how it's best used within Radar is really up to Kenmore. And it's kind of the best operation for us.
So, there is some mechanism, then, to increase Radar and Kenmore with that money, then?
Yes, with the contribution we have budgeted, it would go directly to services here in Kenmore.
Fantastic, thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yeah, a quick question on the jail and court costs. Did we look into the potential for further reductions if we were to contract instead of SCORE with a jail that is closer to us? That is a long way away, and at least takes the officer out of circulation doing transport.
Yeah, it's not ideal. As someone who's made that trip many times, it's not great, especially during rush hour, but there aren't a lot of great options, which is why most of jurisdictions up here are continuing to use SCORE, such as Shoreline. We have, I have had discussions with Snell County about potentially contracting with their jail once again, but as you know, we, a few years back, that's who we were with prior to SCORE, and then they stopped contracting due to some issues in their jail. And eventually, we may see cities up here on the north end go back to Snell County, and we may follow suit, but at this point, sticking with SCORE is the best option.
I was just thinking Kirkland or something that's a little closer, but...
Yeah, so a few years ago, Kirkland built a new jail, and several times now, I've asked Kirkland if we could participate and send our folks over there, and so far, they've told me they're not ready.
No, okay, thank you.
Although they have started allowing Woodinville, I believe, to allow to use their jail. So, that's a good sign.
Interesting, because we used to haul them to Yakima. So, to me, SCORE is closer than Yakima was. Anyway. Anybody else?
Mayor Baker?
Yes, Councilmember File.
Thank you. You know, I also support trying to re-tap into that conversation with the city of Kirkland again. I think if they're working with Woodinville, the time is a good time to re-approach that conversation. And of course, knowing the past issues with the Sohomish County Jail, I think we want to, while we need to keep our community safe, we also have to make sure that people are safe in custody when they are in custody. So, that's an issue. You know, I really, this is hard. It's so important, what our police, fire, and aid do for our community in the public health and education. And why I know that in the past, North Shore Schools has worked with the city of Kenmore to ensure that the the School Resource Officer was one consistent officer contracted to serve the campuses because we're Title I pathway. You know, it's important to have a presence that our youth and families can trust. And so, with the SRO program looking like it's going to cut from North Shore, and I applaud the effort in moving forward on the nurturing trust workshops, family and community engagement, because our community has desperately said they need it. And we need those positive connections with our community and the good service that comes with education and enrichment through our police, whether it's on driving or enrichment through our police, whether it's on driving or you know, how to stay safe and drug-free in our community and how to ask for help when you need help. Those early trusts and origins are so helpful in reducing early childhood trauma. So I absolutely support the National Light Out event, the nurturing trust workshop. And I'm glad we can invest in radar a little bit more to better serve our community. So thank you for putting this together. I do have one question, which is in our police reports, we don't see hate crime as an element in that combined report. And while we do know that we have bias and hate targeted crime in the city of Kenmore, it's important to document that so that when it's reported to the King County Sheriff's Office and to the Washington State Sheriff's and Police Chiefs Association and then out to the FBI, that piloted money program that is rolled back into our community to directly focus, support to address those issues within our community can happen. So do we need to put a focused effort there or do we need to adopt the safe place program is my question?
So in terms of the reporting on hate crimes to the Kenmore, I review all the reports and they come across the desk or they come across the desk of the Kenmore police. And so I see all of them off the top of my head. I cannot think of a particular hate crime that's occurred here in recent history since I've joined. That's not to say it hasn't happened, just has been reported.
Let me refresh your mind. I'm sorry to interrupt, but we've had churches littered with anti-Semitic materials or targeted by white supremacist groups. We've had a park that was defaced and with anti-trans hate language and spray painted with a dog dish attached and a chain. That's, those are clear messagings. I know that our schools have reported hate crimes within them and there has to be a way of documenting these because it is an element that is present in Kenmore. And to, to develop a welcome, safe, inclusive Kenmore, we have to be honest and call out those issues and actively work on them.
Yeah, and I apologize, I was referencing my time here, that those issues might likely happen before I joined the force to get here in Kenmore. But certainly, any, any type of hate crime is going to be documented in a report and, and including a statistic telling the police services report that was reported to the, to the federal government for their statistical purposes. But the program we're referring to, the safe space program would be certainly, I think, something very welcome and appreciated here in Kenmore. There's no doubt about that. I know there's been success of that in other jurisdictions, especially Seattle.
I would like to have the opinion of our fellow councilmembers on whether or not they would support the safe place program in Kenmore. And what is that fiscal impact if we did? Is the last question to our police chief before we have any input from our councilmembers.
So in terms of fiscal impact, I'm speaking a bit blindly here. I don't, I've not researched the program extensively enough to know the complete cost. But my assumption is a lot of it is communication-based, communicating the program to the public and printing costs and staff time to implement the program, implement and manage the program. That primarily be the crux of the program. The exact dollar amount I can tell you.
So Mayor Baker, that rolls a question back to our chair. I proposed that question to our fellow councilmembers if that's a program that they would support that directly impacts addressing bias and hate crime and hate speech.
Yeah, I've never heard of that program. I'd like some more information on that program itself.
Well, this program in fact died here in Kenmore. It was adopted by the North Shore Council TSA and surrounding cities were supported it. But it was a program that died here in Kenmore because of a issue about rainbows.
Yeah, I've not heard of the program. I don't know anything about it.
Mr. Mar?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, we, this is something we talked about, I, two or three years ago, I can't remember. I don't remember all the details though, and I would need to refresh myself on what exactly the program was. I was supportive at the time, but that was again, a few years ago. So I'm super fuzzy on the details. But it is something that we discussed a bit with, with Pat, with a past council a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and I would like to refresh my mind also because I just don't remember that much about it. Too many things come in front of us. Anybody else? Number Curtis?
So my comment is I don't know enough to support it at this point. It feels like it should come up whenever our next renewal of the police contract is. Because basically we're asking for extra service. So I don't know when that occurs, but definitely I'd need more information. It makes more sense rather than us approving or disapproving of it in budget right now. It needs to be in coordination with renewal of contract.
Councilmember Kane?
Based, based on my understanding of the program, I think it's something that I support. It's in alignment with our diversity, equity and inclusion initiative that we're moving forward on. I think ensuring that Kenmore is a safe place for all of our residents is incredibly important. So I actually, I don't think the budget impacts would be too great. And it's something I fully support if that's the direction that the council wishes to move. So you can count on my support on this initiative.
All right, any other comments? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, I was muted there. Yeah, I don't think waiting, I don't think this is something that would require change with our contract with, with, with King County Sheriff. I could be wrong, but I don't think this is a, that sort of budget impact. I think this probably is a more appropriate time to discuss it, but I'm not sure if we have the information we need tonight to make a decision. So it might be something to ask staff to, you know, come back to us with a little bit more information and we can discuss it at a later meeting.
Right, anybody else?
I can support Deputy Mayor Nigel Harebriggs' recommendation and I'd like to see that come back to us. Thank you.
Yeah, can staff, can look, staff look into that and bring it back to us?
Yes.
All right, is that all from Public Safety Chief?
It is.
All right. What else do you have for us, Joan?
Thank you. So we will transition now to the Development Services Department and Brian Hampson will take the lead from here.
Thanks, Joan. Good evening, council. I was actually a little surprised that we got to meet tonight. I was wondering if we would get here. So thank you for sticking through this and getting to this point. Development Services, we're primarily reviewing plans and permits for all the construction work that's going on within the city. And that can be anything from the entitlements that developers will get with their land use permits to building permits for a single-family deck in the end. So primarily any types of permits in the city will deal with. There's a few that we don't deal with. There's, like you've heard before, the franchise utility right-of-way permits. Public Works will handle and manage those permits. There are also some other outside agencies that process permits within the city. And those are such as the Fire Department for the Fire Suppression Systems and Puget Sound Clean Air Agency for the burn permits. Or you might have electrical permits through LNI. Some of the major items that are in our budget that you might not expect are items such as North Shore Emergency Management Coalition. So being part of that organization is, is in our budget. Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. I'm still kind of on the same one. I'm just explaining it a little bit more here, Joan. But the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency dues and memberships are in our budget. Historical Preservation Program, Hearing Examiner. Even though we do have the Hearing Examiner Service, we pay for it out of our budget. We don't necessarily have a good way to predict what those costs will be in the upcoming years. So we primarily look at what the history has been throughout the times. And so that's how we budget for the Hearing Examiner Services. But those are those ones that can fluctuate based on what kind of services they provide for us over the years. Another interesting one that's in our department is the credit card fees. And so as people process permits online or pay for their permits with a credit card, those expenditures are coming out of our department. While we do recoup them on the other end through the revenues, we do have a revenue for credit card fees that doesn't necessarily show in our department. And I think you heard earlier, mybuildingpermit.com. So mybuildingpermit.com is in our department. And so in 2021, we're looking at about 10 and a half percent of the overall general fund. That would be through Development Services. The FTEs that we are actually recommending would be 7.5. And that would be a 25% increase in our expenditures from the previous biennium. And the reason that that is 25% or multiple reasons, one of them is that we shifted a position from Public Works into Development Services. That's the Development Review Engineer, starting in 2021. Also, we're requesting a half-time administrative assistant in our department. So currently, we split a full-time administrative assistant with community development. And we are in definite need of additional administrative support. So we're asking for a full-time administrative assistant, an increase of half of a FTE in this position or in this department. In addition to the positions, some of those other memberships that we're part of, the dues are also increasing a little bit. And so that increases to the overall budget. There is a larger expenditure that we are proposing, and that's a integration with our permitting software, which is my building, or excuse me, Trackett, and our service request program, which is CityWorks. And so those primarily are the reason for the increase in the expenditures. But I would again emphasize more that it's on benefits and payroll than other programs. So as we've heard earlier, with some of the rev, revenues that we're predicting over the next biennium, we're actually predicting them to slightly decrease in 2021 and 2022. Now, revenues are hard to predict on any given year, but during the pandemic, they're extremely hard to predict. And so in order to be a little bit more conservative, based on all the financial stuff that we see going on, we're decreasing those slightly over the next biennium. We do have some pretty good projects that are in the pipeline. So if we do get some of those bigger projects to step up and make an application, those could change our revenues very quickly, dramatically, if those do come in. So we're crossing our fingers and hoping that we can get some additional development. The permitting revenues include all the permitting services that we provide, including, like I said, the land use, the subdivisions, any site plan or engineering grading and building mechanical permits. Those are all included in the permit revenues. The projected revenues for 2021 is 1.7 million versus 1.0, almost 1.9 million that we saw in 2019 and 20. Again, those are expected to go down just a little bit. Here are some of the projects that are in our pipeline that we're hoping to see over the next biennium. There's a 41-minute, 41-unit mixed-use building on 73rd that could be under construction here pretty soon. An 80-unit townhome, a project up 68th towards the north end. Yeah, that we're really expecting to come possibly this year, but it's in the pipeline. We have a multifamily unit mixed-use project, possibly 108 units going at the Old Miraoma site. And there's a couple of other properties down in the TOD that developers are kicking the tires over. So there could be other ones that we'll see over the next biennium. So this is the type of, we are actually proposing a half of full-time employees. I mentioned this for the administrative assistant in 21, 22. And as I said, the Development Review Engineer is now going to be located in this department. The programs that we have are generally staying the same. Most of our permit programs that are scoring higher are, as you would understand, are the land use reviews, the building inspections, the code enforcement, the permit intake and management, emergency management. Those types of ones are the highest PBB programs that are in our department. Is that, that might be the last slide.
Questions? Do we have any questions for Mr. Hampson? Any questions? I'm not seeing any. Yes, Councilmember File?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Let's see, and taking a look at what you presented here today. I appreciate your work on this and I, I do have hopes that we have these projects come to Kenmore. Certainly hope they come with a good amount of planned parking because we cannot have any more road parking congestion on our streets. That being said, I personally am a little concerned about yet another staff person position that we have to fund before 2022. I think we have to be responsible. I understand it's so important and your, your department is very stretched with the bridge project and a number of other permit projects and future projects. But I do think we are also in the midst of a rainy day crisis. And I appreciate everything your department does for the city of Kenmore and to serve our community. But I am concerned about our bottom line. And is this added position into something you absolutely need at this time? Or would a intern position be helpful or supportive? Or could you make do with waiting a year or two are my questions?
The work that the administrative assistant really needs to perform in our department, our state, local, county requirements. And we need, you know, somebody that is qualified, experienced to do those. And so while some administrative positions might benefit from hiring a intern or temporary help, when it comes to, what do you call it? Skip my mind, file management, archiving, all the state-required archiving that we have to do. We need somebody who's really up to speed on those and it's harder to bring in consultants. When we have stuff as legal notices for public hearings that need to go out. Those have time-specific state law requirements that have to be met. And we also have this person is responsible for managing our financial guarantees. So these are the performance, or excuse me, these are the bonds that people put in place for the performance or the maintenance of projects. And so that's something that you wouldn't be able to teach somebody from the outside. What's, what's happening now unfortunately is like we mentioned earlier, we, Development Services and Community Development What's, what's happening now, unfortunately, is like we mentioned earlier, we development services and community development split this position, and community development needs administrative support. But because of the requirements that development services have, what ends up happening is community development gets a short end of the stick because of all the mandated requirements that we need to do. It's just, in my opinion, it's not fair for the other department. And so, you know, for those reasons, I think it's pretty important that that we get a full-time employee for that in that position.
Thank you for helping me understand this issue. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor Baker.
Kane.
Mr. Hampson, I actually really appreciate your thoughtful explanation regarding the position. I just wanted to say that I recognize the need for this position and have great respect for the measured approach our city takes towards hiring and filling FTEs. We have a responsibility to fulfill services to our community. And so I, I, I'm supportive, and I just want to say that I reckon we do not take FTEs lightly in the city of Kenmore at all. And we are a growing community, and we have work that needs to be done. Money spent towards FTEs is not a waste in this community. We are spending our dollars wisely and investing in our community. So I really appreciate the presentation that you have given, and I just want to make sure that that fact is acknowledged. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. All right, Ms. Gregory, what else you got? Councilmember Kane, you raise your hand again.
Oh, it looks like Ms. Gregory is on mute.
I am. Thank you so much. What was I saying? That's it for this evening. That concludes our presentations. And next week, new lineup of departments, a new cast of characters to present those departments. If anything occurs between now and then regarding any of the presentation tonight, there are questions that you would like answered that occur to you over the course of that week. Make sure that you get them to me or Rob, and we'll do our best to provide answers to them next Monday night.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is 61st Avenue Northeast Sidewalk Grant Application for Discussion Direction. City Manager. Is that you or is that someone else?
That would be me. All right. City engineer.
Oh, well, Mr. Vincente.
Yes, I've been hiding in the background here for a while.
You have.
Yes.
Lurking.
The lurking is definitely what's been happening tonight. So anyways, good evening, Mayor, Council. I wanted to have a brief conversation with Council and to get their, get a discussion and a decision on on our 61st sidewalk replacement project. Back in the summer, there was a call for projects for grant funding, specifically the pedestrian and bike safety grant that the state puts out. And we applied for grant funds for the replacing sidewalk on the 61st Avenue corridor. And we requested about $899,000 of grant funding, and then also utilizing some of our local dollars to match with that grant fund. We met with the, or I met with the granting agencies last week, and they went through the project and they, they really like it. They see the need, but they made three recommendations that we make some adjustments to our grant application to make the project more competitive and to make it more desirable for those in the state that make grant selections. One of the things that they asked for was to eliminate the right-term pocket on 61st on the 93rd going southbound. They asked that we add curb bulbs to wherever we're going to have crossings. And they also asked us to add bike lanes on both sides of the street. Currently, on 61st, we have sporadic parking on the east and west side. We've got about a three-foot shoulder that exists on either side in several locations, which is not an official bike lane. It needs to be a minimum of five feet. And of course, we're all familiar with what the sidewalks on 61st there. Troublesome, we'll say. So for us to add by the other two options, the limiting or limiting the right-term pocket on 193rd and doing curb bulbs at crossings is not anything too difficult. And we can easily add that into the project scope. Adding the bike lanes creates a bit of a, an issue for us. If we were to add bike lanes, we have to sacrifice a large chunk of the on-street parking that's along that corridor. Currently, with trying to preserve trees, I'm looking at having to eliminate approximately 20 parking stalls on the east side. If we add bike lanes, we eliminate an additional 44 stalls, which leaves us with a net of about 14 spaces. Within the agenda bill, we did, listed some statistics on parking that we saw. We looked at it day, night, what have you, and we're looking at about three to four cars on average, parking on each side of the street at any given time. We looked at early morning, afternoon, weekend, night. So as quickly as we could get some data, we grabbed it, and that's what we're finding. So we're not seeing a lot of use on this corridor, but we do have some use.
John, can I just clarifying the location? So what we're talking about is 61st from what I call the pork chop, which is 193rd north to the city limits, right?
Yeah, to 62nd, just south of the limits.
Right. And so when you say a net of 14 parking spaces will be left over, that's from the pork chop to 62nd, right?
Correct, and the majority of them would be on the east side of the street. I believe one or two spots on the west side could be preserved on the very far northern end, right against the big retaining wall at the very northern end. There's a little bulb up that I think used to be a bus pullout.
And you've, you said that on the, the counts that we've done, and we've done them in the evening and the weekend and weekday, you're seeing a handful of cars, maybe five, six cars parked at any given time?
Yeah, on each side. I think the, I think we saw the most of six on one side and four on the other. And on other times, we did maybe one car on the entire corridor. So not, not in a dramatic amount, but still there are vehicles parked out there.
So just clarification, I'm looking here at the, at the information in our packet, and it says 181st to 205th. So in reality, that's not true. It's actually 191st to 205th?
So if you, if I remember correctly, I provided a cross-section for what that corridor is supposed to look like. And that cross-section is from 181st to 205th. But the, the area of where we're looking for funding for the grant is from 190th to 62nd. And the area of parking is from 193rd to 62nd.
Right, you already have bike lanes and pretty much no parking from 181st to the pork chop intersection.
Currently, yes.
And so it's really, and so you're right, it's a longer corridor, but the part we're focusing on tonight is from the pork chop north. Just because from a policy standpoint, we're, we're wanting to know if you're okay with sacrificing on-street parking for bike lanes.
All right, Councilmember Curtis.
I have a slightly different question. To me, it feels like this is a sidewalk problem primarily that we need to fix, no doubt about it. For safety, for walkability, for every reason. To add the bike lane piece feels a bit misdirected. We're already spending a lot of money on 202nd and 68th with the walkways and waterways to get bike access from the north of the city all the way through down to the south end of the city. So it just feels like we should stay focused on sidewalks and not try to make this prod project bigger just to hope we get some funding, because I'm not sure we're going to get the funding from that. I know we need to fix sidewalks. I'm not sure we need to do all the rest. I think we're just making ourselves a really big project for 61st all the way down, and it's going to be really millions expensive.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. You know, quite frankly, the state of our sidewalks on 61st is rather atrocious in some areas and very dangerous to pedestrians. I know several members of the community have a number of walk and fall issues along that way, as well as one of our sitting council members. And to be fair, this is a corridor that had prior bicycle, car impacts. And this is a highly traveled and navigated corridor. I think it'd be responsible for the city of Kenmore and our council to, to adopt the plan with bike lanes. And it's keeping with our mission to work on pedestrian bicycle safety, safety and Target Zero. Some of our trees, I don't know if they can be saved and planted deeper or relocated, or however that would work about. Because where they had been planted, they were not planted deep enough, which has raised the sidewalks in a number of areas along that way. So that being said, that is my, my position on this issue. And thank you for your hard work on this, Mr. John Vincente.
All right, any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Shrubnik and Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I had a one question and just sort of an observation. My, my understanding from the memo or maybe discussion is that if we propose the bike lanes, we could propose the additional money that they would cost to put them in. I mean, it'd be a comprehensive grant application, so that's just a point of clarification. I want to make sure. And then in the memo, it, it says per comprehensive plan and, and road standards, the future plan for 61st Avenue is to have bike lanes with no parking C cross-section. So that is, and this is the question, is this is already in our comprehensive plan? Is that what we're saying? So this is not necessarily going to be a surprise. Obviously, we haven't, you know, promulgated this specifically, but you know, this, this is the plan. This was the plan. It is a major corridor. We've had accidents there. I frankly, I see this as an opportunity to, to make a fairly significant leap in the right direction. If we can get the grant, of course, if we don't get the grant, we're not, we're not going to do that piece. But, you know, and then you try again another day, but I, it seems like it's, it's an opportunity.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Shrubnik got to kind of where I was going. I think that these, I think that this quarter was added after we did the Bike Ped Safety Committee back in like 2014. I think that, that that led to this being added to the comp plan. I might be wrong, but I think that that's when this got added, and we already have half the quarter taken care of. So I think it makes sense, especially if it's going to help us with the funding side of things to move forward in that direction. Outside of the bike lanes, my top two priorities for 61st are to get those sidewalks walkable in some way, because it really doesn't speak well to the city if people walk along that, that section. It really is, that's kind of smart files, as dangerous, and also it just, just sends a bad message. On the flip side, though, my second priority is to preserve as many of those trees as we can, because that is a real signature kind of boulevard, not boulevard, but it's a signature feature, yeah, for the corridor. And losing a significant of a number of those trees would really, I think, be, it'd be noticed by folks from outside the area. It'd be a, it would be a blow to the city. And beyond that, the trees add a lot of positives to the quarter beyond just their natural beauty. So I appreciate our staff getting as creative as possible to try to both make the area as walkable and as safe as possible, while trying to maintain as many of those trees as we can going forward, because it would take us a generation or two to, well, probably two or three generations to grow those back. So if we have to spend a little bit extra, I'm totally fine with that. So I'm in favor of moving forward and seeing if we can get the grant and take care of the bike lanes now. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Kane.
Yes, I, I would echo Councilmembers File, Herbig and Shrubnik in support of adding the bike lanes. And I echo the importance of the sidewalk improvements. I live along 61st, and I see people walking to the bus every day. I don't know how many people. I've never counted. There's always someone walking, and the trip hazards are dangerous. But in addition with the bike lane, we need comprehensive bike lanes on 61st. It's, we're near the Burke and the Trail. We're a traffic corridor for people to tell commute, to commute to work, as well as it'd be great for kids to be able to ride their bikes safely to Kenmore Middle School. So I, I fully support it and appreciate you bringing this to us. Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of applying for the grant and then also using the bike lanes. I, I do regret somewhat that we didn't have more time in consulting with the folks that you did in order to alert neighbors to the specificity of that. So I hope going forward with the whole project on 61st, we can really get the public involved and really give the, the good notice to everybody so that everybody's thoroughly involved in trying to take care of the, the issue. But it's definitely, anything that increases the likelihood of the sidewalk getting fixed sooner is, is much the better. For me, I think it was like maybe a year ago or something, I saw a guy in a wheelchair, like driving his wheelchair in the street next to the sidewalks, because the sidewalks are impassable. So just, you know, but anyway, I think this is a positive step. Let's try to, try to get a community outreach as we go forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
Does this need to be on our CIP project? Or is it already on our CIP project so we can get the funds?
So let me try and address everyone's questions, comments. So, so yes, with the CIP that was brought to you last week, I forget already. The project is on our CIP. It's, I think it's T43 61st Sidewalk Replacement, so that's definitely on there. Council actually did approve about $90,000 a year to go towards replacing sidewalks on that corridor. And applying for this grant was going to help us accelerate that replacement process. So if we were to add the bike lanes to this project, the, the grant agency does allow me to increase my request for additional funding. So there would be no increase in city dollars. It would just be an increase in ask towards the grant. And again, yes, the, the sidewalks are, the bike lanes are in our comp plan. They're in our cross-sections. But I also wanted to bring it to Council's attention, because we are going to be revising the transportation element of the comp plan in a couple of years. And if for some reason Council decides they don't want this to be a bike quarter, this would be a good time to say, whoa, you know, let's not, we're rethinking this whole thing. So before we make an assumption that everything within the comp plan is going to stay solid, I wanted to, to let you be aware of what we're proposing, because if we do make this request and we get the funding, we're obligated to do it, or we have to give the money back. So that's why it's kind of a do or die situation. And also, there is no guarantee, of course, that we will get funding if we put this in there, even though, and this is where it gets very, it's kind of a, it's a slippery slope. We're adding more to this project, which makes it more competitive, but we're also increasing the cost, which reduces the competitiveness. So there's a fine line about how much you can ask for and what you're proposing to do. And the amount of work that we're doing doesn't quite balance out with how much money we're asking for, because it is such a large amount of work that needs to be done. And since this grant is a pedestrian bicycle grant, they want to see both elements in a grant package to provide that competitiveness, or else we're just half-competitive. they want to see both elements in a grant package to provide that competitiveness, or else we're just half competitive. So adding in these bike lanes, especially since we already have the room there to do it and to add the bike lanes in for some parts of the quarter, it's just paint. So it's not a huge cost to us because a lot of the improvements that I'm proposing to do is going to have to require some fancy engineering to try and save the trees. We're still going to lose some trees. That's inevitable. There are some locations where there just isn't enough width in the right of way to accommodate the trees. Some of the big problems that we have with this corridor, these trees are so large and there's they're right next to the sidewalk. And you have to have some sort of buffering between your trees and your sidewalk, or you're going to lose one of the other. And so that's some of the problems that we have out there. And then oh darn it, I was going to mention one other thing. Oh, the the plan for this corridor is the spending next year to evaluate our options. We a couple of years ago did an alternative analysis on how we could do with the sidewalks there. And I feel that there was one option that hadn't been looked at. And so I want to incorporate that. And then my goal was to then go back to you to look at our options and then for you as a group can decide which course you want us to take. And then from there, getting the public engaged or one way or the other, maybe coming back to you with here's what the public said. Are you sure? So yeah, this is definitely going to require a lot of public input because of the trees, because of potential parking issues that you'd be aware of. We're going to be changing some of the intersections. So we definitely need to get everybody involved. So that that is the intention I've got. If we get this grant, I won't be able to really start spending it until January of 2022. So I'll be spending 2021 kind of evaluating this quarter because I'm going to have to do that regardless. So you there definitely will be more coming back to you and to the public on this. So this is not going to occur in a vacuum. So and again, if we don't get the funding, it will take a lot longer to replace this unless we get lucky and get the state earmark that we've asked for. So Rob put in a request for some funding for this quarter as well to the state. So we're throwing our hat everywhere we possibly can and seeing what turns up. With that, unless there's any, oh.
Councilmember Curtis.
Oh, that's Councilmember File.
I know, but Councilmember Curtis had his hand up, I thought before.
No, no, I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Mr. John Vicente, one of the largest issues that comes along with 61st is our connection to multimodal routes of transportation that connect to our bus, our metro rest transit. And a big ask of the community has been bike parking there at the end of 61st near the metro stop. And so whether this is a conversation that we need to push forward with the ST three transit growth and expansion, or whether we have to consider on our end, is a large enough ask from our community. I think we should be really addressing this because it is so much farther from the Kimball parking right and there is an absence of this high demand parking in that area.
And that was actually one of the selling points that I did use with the grant is that there is no bus service on 61st. And people have to go a long distance to get to those buses. And there's a large diverse community that is served by the 61st corridor. And the granting agencies saw that and they 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 think that adds a lot of value to this grant application, the fact that there is no other option for people and it serves a large diverse group.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Question. What's the city's match on this?
Our match on this is $160,000. That will cover with the 2021, 2022 budget that we have approved. We also have funding approved for later years. So if we wind up not being able to, we don't have enough funding, then we can use those later funds to supplement additional work later.
So do we have the funds already set aside for this?
Yes, it was approved in our CIP and the money is there. Joanne, of course, finds whatever we need.
A lot of times it gets in our CIP, but the money is questionable. It's where it's coming from. It could be future grants. It could be any number of things, but to have the cold, hard cash sitting in the bank that won't be used for anything else is important.
Yeah, normally council has approved $100,000 per year to our sidewalk gap replacement program. And we took 75,000 from that and put it into the 61st sidewalk replacement. And then we had an additional funding coming from surface water, additional 15,000.
So then this this is kind of like robbing Peter to pay Paul because you've taken it out of the the so what are we going to do about replacing, you know, the the sidewalk gaps? Are they just going to go by the wayside for now?
Well, right now we've got, I retained $25,000 in that account for each year. And that will go towards, if we wind up getting requests to reduce some replacement, we'll use that money for that. As an example, last year, we got a request from a resident on 61st to replace curb ramps at 190th because her grandson wasn't able to get onto the sidewalk on the east side. And so we use that money to replace those curb ramps that that he would have better access. That cost was about $10,000. So my goal was to look at taking some of that money and applying it to 73rd. Where we've got similar issues to 61st, just not as extreme. We've got curb ramp issues. We've got panel issues. And I was looking to potentially incorporate that into our 73rd overlay project so that it's all combined together to save us on cost.
All right. City manager has got all the information he needs. Thank you very much, Mr. Vicente, unless there's more questions. Nope. All right. Next item on the agenda.
Did we want to, do we need to do a recommendation? So just be done. Okay.
City manager says he has all the information he needs. Next item on the agenda, staff report.
Thanks for a great council meeting and good budget discussions so far. Great questions, comments. Thank you very much. I don't have anything else except our city clerk has something she wants to mention.
Hi, council. You're hanging in there. I wanted to button up the Zoom links question I keep getting. Some of you are saying, Anastasia, please stop. We don't want to be bombarded with any more of the Zoom link stuff. Some of you are saying we need some calendar links. What I need to know is when Zoom initiates a panelist link from that email, you can select an option that'll populate your calendar for you. Now, remember, your panelist link is unique and it's secure and it's it identifies you as a panelist. What I can do is start sending the generic meeting link as a calendar invite and invite everybody. But that, you know, if you use that link, you'll always show up to the meeting as an attendee and I'm absolutely happy to promote you to panelist. But again, I think it's that panelist link that you're after. Is that so are we just not seeing the option in the Zoom invite that allows you to populate it to the calendar or where? What's what's the trouble? What is the challenge?
Challenge is I never got an email for the link. I looked back in my emails for Friday when it was sent out and I never got any.
Right, same, same. Okay. Okay, very good. And I also noticed I heard from internally that we've been haunted by the ghost of clerks past and that some of them are still coming through from Kelly. So it's possible that they're getting filtered out. So I'm digging like an archaeologist. I'm finding those old artifacts and I'll button that up. What I'll do moving forward is for the panelist link itself, Zoom has this option that allows you to send a reminder a week prior, a day prior and an hour prior. And I can use that just before warned that it might, you know, you'll get double, triple. Would I say better that than not getting the link? What do you think?
That's a little much, but if it works, it works.
An hour prior is what I need. Honestly, it's all I need is an hour prior. I mean, I do need it for my calendar. I would personally, I if it were, if there were a way to send my panelist link as an individual to me directly to my calendar, that that would be really helpful. But if that's not an option, I definitely, what happens is I come in, I check about an hour before anyway, that's I'm just making sure I have everything queued up for the meeting. So that's when I I most need it. So I don't have to go, was it Friday? Was it two weeks ago? How far back do I have to look? That's what that's what I do each week. And I go, oh, I can just click on the agenda link and you can bring me in there, which I just, I can do that, you know, but if we're gonna, I would love a link that's really easily accessible an hour before a meeting. If not on calendar directly, that's, I mean, I'd love it directly on my calendar. But yeah, that's a little bit cumbersome to send seven invitations that way.
Okay, I'll work on that in the background. I think I've got what I need from you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's go around. Councilmember O'Keane, comments.
I'm going to be brief today and just say thank you for a really productive meeting. I will say thank you to our community residents for coming out for clean air. Yesterday, we had great representation and you know, our representatives Paulette and Baldes also came out to to support our residents in our fight to get the testing at Cadman. So it was pretty tremendous. And I want to thank each of the council members who attended as well. So that's it.
All right, Councilmember Marshall.
Nothing to report. Thanks all.
Councilmember Curtis.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
I second what Councilmember O'Keane said. It was a great event yesterday and yeah, and nothing more to add. This was a very productive meeting. Thank you to everyone on the council and our wonderful, wonderful staff.
Councilmember File.
Thank you. You know, I just want to say it was a wonderful event that occurred this weekend and and thank you, Councilmember O'Keane, for putting that together and coordinating efforts with the groups. And we welcomed goats at City Hall. It's really fabulous. It was great to see goats on the City Hall steps. I never expected to see that happen, but fun nevertheless. I would like to say I I support an ask that occurred earlier in a meeting, which was the request for a veterans recognition proclamation. And we do have a good amount of prior serving service members and surviving families in our community. And it would be a good honor and respect to our community to celebrate our veterans and their families and their loved ones. So I'd like to move that we do so. So I'm making that motion right now.
Second it.
Great.
I understand the importance of this. I think it's pretty easy to ask staff to put together a resolution to bring back. It's much easier than than doing motions and voting this late in the meeting where the public, a lot of them have left. And we are trying to be an open council, more communicative, more transparent. And this just doesn't make things transparent. So I'm happy to take a vote on the motion, but I'm also happy to just ask staff, can you please bring some a resolution back to us?
I'm okay with either approach.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes, I'm I'm okay with either approach. And I appreciate Councilmember File having brought it up. I I think it's, I think we're okay in terms of transparency in that it was asked earlier today and, you know, the person could hopefully reasonably expect it'll be brought up and it's brought here. And of course, you know, this is the time for us to introduce new items or other items as well. This is our
Bring back to us at a regular meeting.
Yeah, there's that too. There's that option too.
Not to vote on.
Yeah, there's that option too, but I I appreciate it coming up here. Thank you.
I just had a comment. So resulate resolutions take or proclamations take quite a bit of work. You got to draft them. You got to research it. You got to check the data. You got to coordinate with some entity to come and accept the resolution. There's a lot of phone calls, emails that go on. This is a really great resolution and proclamation. It's worthy. But what I would prefer is that especially proclamations like this, if they could come from the community, if some group could have a pre-written proclamation and have already designated who's going to come to the council meeting to accept it rather than staffs that are spending several hours chasing it all down and trying to write a proclamation from scratch and checking all the data and all that. So if there's somebody from the community that could come with the proclamation ready for us, that would save a lot of valuable staff time.
I would be happy to work with Stacy Vinswella further. She's a surviving veteran's daughter. And she's worked really beautifully with the veterans community and their families and trying to get a memorial, which amidst COVID is has ran into some real significant troubles. All the same that Councilmember Smith had once occurred. Nevertheless, Veterans Day is November 11th, so I think we're having a good early conversation. And I'm sure we can get a sample forward. And so I appreciate that.
So may be supportive as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Curtis. And just to wrap up, there were a number of comments made about a council member who might be on section eight. I'd like to clarify that. I'm not and nor have I ever been on section eight. I don't know that any of our sitting council members are currently. But that being said, to our community members who do have to have supportive housing on section eight or very low and low income housing, there's nothing wrong with having to have housing support. And so I appreciate that, but do know that as I do not own a house in Kimball, I once had, I do pay rent and a majority of my income, a mass majority of my income goes to paying rent for myself and my two kids. And I, with every tax increase, I get a increase in my rent of greater than usually 120 to $130. That's a lot each year. That's enough to put most seniors out of their housing situation or single parent families out of their homes or workforce. Our hardworking union workforce labor out of their jobs and out of their homes surviving in our community. So we really want to work towards building a connected community where people can live near where they work. And hopefully we can do that together in Kimball. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just had a really quick question for the city manager. During public comment, Mr. O'Brien brought up questions about hours of operation, noise regulations and the asphalt plant. I know you've done some work with our legal counsel on how we're interpreting and what we can and can't enforce, what's part of the business license, what isn't. Have you sent a response to Mr. O'Brien? Or I can't remember if there is a response that went out to him or not.
I'll have to check with Brian Hampson on that. I know I clarified it with you. So the asphalt plant can operate at night. They just have to operate under lower sound limits. So
And they're supposed to self-report on noise, right?
Yeah, it's supposed to monitor their noise and self-report. And so they, when it comes to actually operating, there are no hours of operation, but what there are is limits on noise during certain times of the day. So I can make sure we get that to Mr. O'Brien. So he has that information.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Before we move on, I still think we have a motion on the table. Councilmember File made a motion to recognize a proclamation in honor of veterans. And I believe Councilmember O'Keane seconded the motion.
Yes. Yes.
I'm happy to table it and continue to the next meeting where we can bring forward a proclamation to consider before November 11th.
So that's tabling to a date certain?
Could we make that the ninth?
So there's a motion in front of us to table the motion to bring a, to support a Veterans Day proclamation. So all those in favor of tabling the motion till the next meeting? I'm looking at thumbs, looking at thumbs. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. And I have nothing to report at this time. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Not everyone.
Bye-bye.
Good night.